Okay, I'm gonna call our special town meeting. And we need to first start with the election of a moderator. Take nominations from the floor.
I nominate Mayor Mark Kaczynski.
All right, any other nominations? All right, now we're gonna close the nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Eligible to vote in the town meeting for all you folks back there. Any person who was an elector of such town and any citizen of the United States of of the age eighteen years or more who jointly or separately was liable to the town for taxes assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed groundless of such town that's reference to Connecticut Journal Statute Section seven dash six. So that's eligible to vote and legal notice.
Special meaning of the electorate and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Berlin. We hold at Berlin Town Hall, Council Chambers two forty, Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut, on Tuesday, June seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, at six forty-five P M for the following purposes. Accept a non-budgeted appropriation of this age Connecticut local prevention council in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars deposit in the local prevention council revenue account and appropriate those funds to the local prevention council expenditure account, subject to the approval by the Board of Finance.
Thank you. So now, is there a resolution to come before the town meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we make a resolution to accept the non-budgeted appropriation of the state of Connecticut Local Prevention Council in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for deposit in the local prevention council revenue account and appropriate those funds to the local prevention council expenditure account, subject to the approval of the Board of Finance.
Thank you, a second on that. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried, so now we have a discussion on that resolution. And that's for anybody in the audience of qualified citizens. Any discussion on this, council members? Did not, we'll go ahead and actually take a vote on the resolution. So we'll vote on what was just read, or we'll make a motion, I guess, on that again? Should we read it again? Just one, okay. So we're gonna take a vote on the resolution as we read it before. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. So, okay, so the resolution passes and we'll go ahead and the meeting is now adjourned. While we'll have our counseling start shortly, thank you. Okay, welcome everybody to our June seventh town council meeting. If you could please rise for the federal allegiance.
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. The invisible, breathing justice for all.
Call, call, say. Here.
Council, uh, Mayor Kaczynski.
Here.
Council Luddy.
Here.
Council Kena.
Here.
Council Russell. I guess you're online.
Here.
Council, you're not a member.
Thank you. Well, I have a proclamation to read. For the record, next meeting we'll have a, we have two proclamations this month. One is for June nineteenth, which I'll read tonight, and one is for Pride Month, which I'll read at our next meeting. Where's the town of Berlin recognizes that June nineteenth is celebrated nationwide as Juneteenth and that it serves the, remembering the emancipation of enslaved African Americans through the nation. We further recognize Berlin's role in the abolition movement and its contributions towards obtaining emancipation for those who were enslaved. Physical and historical reminders of this rich history stand within our town to this day. Specifically, the Hotchkiss House located at two eighty-nine Main Street, Kensington housed the local abolitionists and served as a stop on the underground railroad. The journey north on the Underground Railroad was long, hard, and dangerous, but worth it for so many looking to escape slavery in the South. We recognize the courage and sacrifice the Hotchkiss family made by opening their home to shelter the brave souls along their road to freedom. So the town has proclaimed June nineteenth as Juneteenth to honor and celebrate our African American citizens and all those who aided and supported their emancipation. It resolved today. Mark Kaczynski has officially recognized June nineteenth as Juneteenth, dated seventh third of June, two thousand and twenty-two. So we have our audience of citizens next. And right after the audience of citizens, whatever you want to speak on, I, I assume, I mean, that's a bad assumption on my part, but there may be some discussion on an event that occurred Sunday in town. And certainly I want to hear from whoever's here to speak about that, or any other topic that you want to talk to the council about. In my update, right after that, we'll have some information for folks on that particular issue on that day. We also have the Assistant Chief here that will fill us in at that point, just on some other detail and action plan going forward. So let's start with our audience of citizens, if anyone wants to speak on it. Yes, sir. You have to come up to the microphone.
Sure.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, my name is Chris Barlow, I live at fifteen Memorial Drive here in Berlin.
Welcome.
Thank you. Wanted to speak in regards to the proclamation that we just read.
Sure.
We are holding a Juneteenth event on June eighteenth, actually, next Saturday.
Okay.
And we would love for you, Mr. Kaczynski, over here, because he would become the proclamationist.
All right.
That'd be great, we do have some other meetings to complete, and we actually have a presentation on this.
Great, and that is where?
It's at the, it's at the proper bike, across the, across the park.
Oh, okay, great. All right, that's wonderful, thank you, guys. Be there, thanks. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir. The Trump row first, then?
Hello, my name is Jane Holland, number forty-one, Angelique Gordon, Berlin. My property abuts, the property is sixteen forty Orchard Road. Our houses are separated by a pond and hill. Together, the two act like an amphitheater, carrying amplifying sounds. You may have heard about this past Sunday where we believe the residence was rented out as an Airbnb. They hosted a party with potentially hundreds of guests. For those of us trapped in our homes, it was clear evidence of drinking and drug activities in all directions. It began in the afternoon, music so loud, we heard it in our house as if we were playing it. Our windows shook at times, it was hardcore music with profanity along with a host and microphone telling women to take off their clothes and describing sexual acts. My children, my youngest being kindergarten, couldn't go outside into our yard as dozens of partygoers were running up and down a road, while car after car drove up and down, parking and filling both sides, and from what we could tell, the surrounding roads. And we are not talking about the standard house party of ten cars. We are talking about hundreds of cars, many driving unsafe, trying to force their way through an already congested space. I heard there was a car accident involving underage intoxicated driver, potentially from this party. The day afterwards, I watched mother and her young son spend their afternoon collecting all the garbage left over from the event. We're hoping the town can help us.
Thank you, sir. Next, yes? I'm Liam, give me that.
Two zero, Bozo, one five eight, Ellen Road. First, I want to thank Mayor Mark for making the proclamation regarding fifteen to Berlin. According to that, and I'd like to extend my thanks to the Berlin Historical Society as well. Second, this question is for Corporation Council, if he's here.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I, in regards to the charter revision, I noted in the statutes that it's usually, first state statute, it's a two-third vote of the appointed authority as the town council to open the charter. I recognize we had unanimous vote, but I'm just curious, is it a two-third vote, or is it a simple majority vote to open it?
Attorney Don O'Friel?
Right, it's a, it's a two-thirds vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town. Third, I want to thank Kate Wall for catching an error that involved the charter revision process. Kate Wall realized that the current charter revision chair cannot serve on the commission because the charter forbids board of finance members from serving on a board of commission. I want to thank Kate Wall for having the integrity to catch and call attention to this error, despite the fact that she could have said nothing. This is an example of integrity, and it's great to know that we have a town employee serving in our government that can demonstrate integrity to such a high degree. That said, while this issue in violation of the charter may seem minor, we should still recognize. I'm not here to stand before you and suggest that this was, this error was in active health reasons. However, it is a violation of the charter. I'm confident Corporation Council will offer some reasons as to why we can technically proceed with the process regardless. And Mr. Don O'Friel, I pointed this out because this is your job, not as a personal thing. But just because we technically can, doesn't mean we necessarily should. Sure, restarting the process may seem arduous and will likely yield the same outcome, but the charter was technically violated. It is deeply ironic that we violated the charter while working to revise it. When it comes to the charter in this process, we must dot our i's and cross our t's. Charter is the fundamental bedrock of our town and should be respected no matter how minor the fraction. Does the council really wish to proceed with the charter that is pertaining with this issue? We can still accomplish the charter condition by doing it the right way this year, and we can truly be proud of this charter revision process. It's always, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
I don't want to take the credit on this, I was informed of it and I just, then, I was told I, but I wasn't being, I won't get. I, I can't, I'm not that, I want to be honest.
You can still take the credit.
I think.
Yeah, as soon as it came forward, we went to Corporation Council and for myself, anyway, we have that on the agenda later, the charter revision. So we'll go ahead and reserve that brief discussion with Attorney Don O'Friel and the council when we get to that agenda, I don't know if we could. So, yes, the young lady's next, and then?
Hello.
Yeah. There you go.
Um, hi, everyone, my name is Chelsea Luddy, and I actually live at fourteen ten Orchard Road. So some of what I was going to discuss has already been brought up by one of my neighbors here, but I just wanted to speak to the event that happened on Sunday night at sixteen forty Orchard Road. Um, I'm not going to go over the same sentiments that I share with the gentleman that already spoke, but I did want to touch upon the event that night in regards to the fact that it did pull our resources from law enforcement on that night, the event. And from my perspective, I really feel that we're living during a time where we already have strained resources, and it's definitely going to prevent us if this continues moving forward through the summer. But some of us are going to become aware that this particular property, it looks like on Airbnb, has been rented out predominantly for the entire summer. Um, you know, the safety issues that occurred that night were, you know, were very tough for most of us that live in the area. Um, you know, should a medical event or any type of fire, you know, or any type of issue at any of those properties had occurred on Sunday night, there would have been a really hard time for emergency personnel to access those streets. Um, you know, given the pure amount of people and cars that were parked in that area. They were parked in front of fire hydrants, um, you know, moving their vehicles. There were dozens of people walking in the roads, creating obviously an unsafe environment in the neighborhood. Um, you know, and I just do feel that it's something needs to be touched upon that, you know, if this is something that, um, you know, the town could get involved in. We are in a residential neighborhood, we're not sold for business there. Um, you know, and that property is obviously not, um, you know, a concert venue or a venue that's meant to hold hundreds of people. Um, so we just wanted to, you know, voice myself and my husband and share support also of the fact that, you know, we appreciate everything that law enforcement did on Sunday night to make sure that there weren't events that escalated beyond what had already occurred. Um, so that's pretty much what we wanted to discuss. Thank you.
David Hubel, I live at sixty fifty-four Orchard Road, so I guess you can figure out when a lot of fun happens.
Let us guess.
I, this thing, I guess, started early after, how it works, yeah, but I got home around six or so, and I came in from Chamberlain Highway off Orchard Road. I approached Angelique Court, there were cars all over the place. I could hardly get off Orchard Road. It was a single, it was a single-lane road because of all the cars on both sides. As was mentioned, people, you know, streaming across the streets indiscriminately, they were just kind of walking. And so, you know, I, I mean, it took several minutes just to get up over the hill, get to my house, which is right next door. Um, in the meantime, to her point, there was a police officer coming up the other way. It was waiting for the one-way traffic to get through all that, and then finally, you know, I passed through, got in my driveway, and then came up. So, and by the way, while I was out in my driveway, one of the attendees stopped and wanted to rent my driveway to park in. I politely declined. It should be, it's difficult.
That's right.
And I don't think it was that person's fault. Heard similar things, that this was a commercial activity. There were some sort of DJ or something with a loudspeaker booming out there, whatever they were saying, I think people across the town could hear it clearly that we, we certainly heard the noise. Um, and then there was some sort of boombox, you know, with all kinds of noise. My wife suffers from, you know, anxiety and depression, and this just put her over the edge. She couldn't even sit in our living room and watch TV in peace without this rumble through the whole house. We couldn't even find shelter within our home, you know, heck of going out at that, that I was hoping to be there. That was out of question, but the amount of people, I know, I know all the town officials have seen the wrong picture. I mean, those cars were all over the place. What if had something happened there in the way of a fire? It would have been terrible, and then, of course, anybody in the neighborhood, if something happened, how would emergency vehicles get through? So, you know, I think a lot of us were not only concerned for what was going on, but a little bit for our safety. You know, there's people, they were all over the place, you know, and seemed to be a little loud, which is what might happen. So we created, you know, a distressful time, and of course, what we're wondering about is, are we going to have to endure this all summer? You know, just for some background, this was the worst incident, but it's not the only incident there. Last year, as some could attest, there were some, I believe the other ones were private, but there was a couple of good-sized private parties, and some of them went all the way into assment. Now, you know, I'm not one to go running to authorities right quick. So we tried to address this by contacting Airbnb, by contacting, well, at least somebody that I know is associated with the home there. I don't know that they're officially the owner, but, you know, I figured complaining, picking up a bit of a ruckus with him might be helpful. Um, and it seemed to, towards the end of the summer, died down a little bit, which is sad. So we thought, okay, maybe we got things solved, or something replaced. Obviously, now this is first, you know, the beginning of summer, not what we got. So we definitely went backwards. I, you know, whatever we tried to do in a light, informal basis with the owners, with Airbnb, obviously, did not stick. So, you know, I also added my voice to the tweet, if you got it. I hope that something further can be done. Uh, I mean, it's just, we, yeah, a private party, if you can put it. So we thank you so much for considering it. I want to say too, that yesterday, I took some time and visited the town hall here, and every person in different departments that I spoke to was in your office. And everyone who's here was receptive, I appreciated that reception, they were willing to, you know, hear my story out, and, you know, and I appreciated that. So it seemed to me that everybody knew about it, and it was concerned, so we appreciate that much. I just felt like maybe the council members may or may not have been as aware, I fear that. So thank you for your time, I appreciate you very much.
If you don't mind me asking, when you contacted Airbnb, what kind of response did you get?
Well, this was last year, and, you know, at first, it's off, you know, it's like not their fault. We persisted in it, and I don't know if the owner or the contact I have, I don't think he's actually the owner, but I think, what he is, I believe, is the ex. It took a while, and then finally, after repetitive calls, then it kind of, you know, acquiesced to saying, okay, we'll put some sort of, how would you say, restriction on the property. I don't believe that there's a restriction, I think it's a suggestion, but frankly, it's all equipped, they probably put all this residential here. But, you know, my opinion is they're pretty much careless around, they want to complain, you know, the landlords or the owners. Perhaps they want to do the same, obviously, but Airbnb, I mean, if we were talking to somebody in Florida, give it the apple, it's happening, that'd be great, right? That was our approach, we just persisted until they finally, it actually put a little something in there, although it's still there. Some properties do have that, responsible homeowners that I know that have owned Airbnbs, they'll put that themselves. But unfortunately now, there's been no one living in that property on a regular basis for at least two years. I don't know if you've ever noticed longer, but once in a while, let's see the gentlemen that I know and the sun around them, that I haven't even seen them. So now we've got a property that reportedly, from those, I guess there's somebody that has, did rent it, and the whole property is getting pretty rundown, the inside as well, I can't vouch for that, I've seen these myself, but, you know, the guy's got up on the market supposedly to sell for an unrealistic price for a broken-down property. So his way of making money is to rent these people. So I don't see that, I don't see a solution coming from the owner. It's going to have to come from other stores that owns it up home.
Young lady then.
Sure.
I'm Al, sorry, I live at three forty-four Holby Road, close to sixteen forty Orchard. I have a few things to say, kind of to build on what the others have said. As I was coming here, I was having a conversation with my sister, who lives in Milford. My fourteen-year-old niece knew about this party before it happened. Um, it was, rumor has it, put on by a large organization that does this at various venues and homes. Um, from what I can tell, they may have been responsible for the Walnut Beach melee that happened a week or two ago. Um, so this is an organized, organized thing that, you know, word travels fast, maybe someone else will try and do it there. Kelly lost my train of thought. Oh, the other, what I wanted to say too, the main reason I wanted to speak though, was that the, with respect to the owner and the owner caring about the use of the property. The Airbnb post itself says that it's big enough to host a large party. Um, so it's pretty obvious that the homeowner doesn't really, or the person managing the Airbnb listing doesn't really care what the property is used for, and is almost encouraging it. Um, my husband did reach out to Airbnb on Sunday, they were quite responsive, actually, at least at face value. Um, they said that according to their terms and conditions, only sixteen people are allowed to be in a home at once, and that they would do an investigation and take the listing down if that's what yielded needed to happen. I'm not sure if that was empty promises, I know Officer Amy has reached out to them too. Um, so maybe with that, that will help make that actually happen. Um, but they obviously don't want towns to ban working or rentals because that hurts their bottom line. So, um, I'm hopeful that if enough people complain, that we can get the listing taken down, but obviously there are other avenues in which to rent properties. Um, and if this person is okay with its use, maybe the outside channels altogether. So, um, I just wanted to say that I don't know if the homeowner is going to be, or the manager is going to be that concerned about what was going on, but I hope that the town can put in measures to keep this from happening again. So, and I really appreciate your prompt response, Maureen and Zoney got back to me quickly and gave you your contact information. Um, and allowing us to speak in this meeting is, is, is great, because it was pretty frustrating. And I live farthest away, so I can only imagine what it's like to be right next to it, so, thank you.
Seem like Leo's seventy-eight Hickory Hill Road. Um, Mr. Mayor, council, I'm here to talk about the charter. Yeah, the charter commission had a public hearing. And at the public hearing, the former, I guess, the former chairperson stated the parameters of where the charter was going to go, seemed to be fair, I mean, stated they're working out, look at the nurses, which I agree, we're reporting finance for this should be addressed. We had a few other issues that, two thousand and sixteen charter revision, probably best to work into it properly. What I was, and, and, you know, I spoke, and, uh, another board of finance member, Jerry, spoke, both spoke, that we thought maybe we should look at, in a way, with the board of finance. We just have an idea, maybe that would be the way to go right now, but that's besides the point. Then the next day, I heard that the former chairman made a motion to look at the Board of Education, and try to make it partisan. Where I take offense to it, is that if that was his intent, which I, you know, I, I believe a charter commission could, once they get together, they can do whatever they want, the council can't control them, nobody can control them, unfortunately. But the problem I had is that he should have just stated that at the, at the public hearing. So it would give people an opportunity to talk about it, to express if we agreed or disagreed. And I realized it was a not-bid vote, and they eventually have to vote, and I realized the council's going to have to look at it. We did this in two thousand and sixteen, and I've got to say, I voted in favor of making a change, and I did vote in favor. At the time, it was a different environment. Uh, we thought it would open it up to more people, and it was just, it was just a different environment. And, and at that year, and I think you remember, Mark, it was a crazy year, we had yes signs all over town, no signs all over town. He was just going out of control, and you've got to admit, it was just crazy. And, and, and it failed. So I think that matter was already decided, and, and as the years go by, and I'm thinking about it, I'm saying, maybe, maybe it's a good idea to just keep it the way it is, because then you can have moms and dads or people that are interested in the board of it. They don't have to go to Democrats or the Republicans and ask for a nomination. They can just get their petitions and just get on the board of it. And I know a lot of people are concerned on the direction of our educational system in, 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 in the country, but I think, I think our educational system in town of Berlin is excellent. I know parents want to be more involved, and I think maybe the Board of Education should probably make a motion out of parents' bill of rights or something, so parents could get involved. I mean, I was the biggest helicopter dad at Berlin High School, when I walked in, school teachers cringed. So I was involved, and I think that's the way to do it, and I hope this council could maybe talk to the new chairman or something and say, you know what, let's just, let's keep the parameters, if you could, I mean, they could do whatever they want, but I hope the council, if they do get this, to not accept, to change the Board of Education, I think it would cause more conflict in town with yes and no signs. And right now, I think we need less conflict, less aggravation, and just pass this charter, get the nursing things fixed, get the bonding process fixed, and a few other things that we missed on the two thousand and sixteen charter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And then, of course, there's still plenty of time for public discussion on the charter review commission. Obviously, it's ongoing, there'll be more public hearings, it'll cover the council, ultimately, of course, goes their voters. Plenty of time for the public to get involved, which we hope many members of the public get involved, that's what we like, we like. More contributions and more involvement from our residents on any issue that comes before the council, the Board of Ed, or anybody in town government, what we want, we want to hear from the residents. All right, audience of citizens still open, any other comments before we close? Anybody on line have anything? If not, we'll go ahead and close you in as citizens. So the topic, I mean, I have my update now, I think the update is, uh, on one topic, obviously, is, I think, is our Orchard Road scenario. So I certainly heard from many residents, phone calls, emails, saw videos, saw the drone video.
Um, so I certainly heard from many residents, uh, phone calls, emails, saw videos, saw the drone video. Pretty interesting. What a mess. Uh, and, you know, not, not, not to be tolerated, but before I talk anymore. Chief, if you would just come up and just give us a little sketch of it and from your perspective. And I know we've, we've got more work to do with the police department, the police commission, town council, planning and zoning. You know, we're gonna, we'll, we'll put an action plan together, different things, probably gonna have to pass it on ordinance. Um, like we know our ordinance is don't really fit that scenario because we really haven't faced that scenario before and now. But the police department, um, for the first time with something like that, I know, I know they did a great job. And I know there's more work to be done with you, whatever you can add. Appreciate it.
Sure. Um, so thank you for coming tonight. Um, obviously we responded, we're aware of what was going on down there. We received calls and I was, I was here tonight to listen, um, as well. So, uh, we share your concerns, uh, traffic, underage drinking, drug use, uh, public safety, crowds. Share your concerns. I can't get into, uh, specific details on our investigation, but we do have two open investigations going with that property. It's some, uh, potential criminal charges that could apply. We're working with other town departments, state departments and law enforcement partners on, you know, bringing this, it's a quality of life issue. We understand that as well, so we're gonna be monitoring, working on these open cases. And, uh, I just encourage, uh, early and often, call early and often. I mean, you see it, parking complaints, unreasonable noise, anything suspicious and first sign of, you know, trouble, call us and, uh, early intervention is probably best. We will be, uh, we have had contact with, uh, Airbnb, so hopefully, uh, maybe we can make some minerals there. But it, it's, uh, in anticipation of this happening again, we're working, um, to reach out with the property owner, the venues that are hosting these online, to try to nip this, but other town departments, there's other, other things available to us down the road. But, um, again, we're, we're gonna address these first two open investigations we have and then continue to monitor. So that's, that's basically the update I have, but, uh, thank you again. You can call anytime if you're interested in, uh, starting up on neighborhood watch. I'm not sure if our community officers have been in your area, but we'll try to, at least in the immediate area and immediate neighbors, we'll try to give you an update on this weekend before the weekend. If you can, knock on the door, or if you can send me an email with your contact, I'll make sure the officer can, can get, kind of, an update on progress where we can.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Yeah, that's great. Appreciate it. Yeah, I, I know that there's investigations ongoing, so we'll let those occur. But so, one of the other things I think we can do, um, certainly as a council, we'll, we'll go ahead and convene our ordinance committee. I don't believe in some discussions with the, with the town attorney already, uh, and actually the, the chief, uh, we'll have another meeting tonight. Appreciate Assistant Chief Susie for being here. Um, there's ordinances in other towns we could look at and, and there's things we have to probably update. We don't really have an ordinance that covers that, but there are ordinance, ordinances that we will identify in other towns that would pass the, uh, the test to go ahead and implement that. And hopefully, uh, help us enforce, you know, something like this getting out of control. Planning and zoning is looking at some options. Obviously, the police department, the police commission are looking at options too. Yeah, so it's obviously fresh, uh, just happened Sunday. So we're gonna, we're gonna get together and, uh, we can, uh, go ahead and probably talk a little bit tonight at our, uh, commissioner comments. But we'll, we'll probably convene the ordinance committee, we'll, uh, the corporation council and, uh, we'll get going on our ordinance as fast as we can. There's a process to pass the ordinance. We have to have a public hearing too. Once we get the, the wording together of that ordinance, we'll go ahead and go through the process as fast as we can with the proper notice, get that passed. And hopefully, from what I understand, in other towns, um, that does work pretty well along with the measures of the police department and police commission, whatever, uh, and planning and zoning too. So get, get the town resources together and we'll, we'll, you know, I, I'm sure we'll take care of this problem. It might take just a few weeks. The police department is the first responders, you know, they'll be there. Um, as, as Chief mentioned, they're aware of the, the problem now and as we all are. And, uh, we'll back it up with some much stronger language and ordinance and probably some rights and planning and zoning as well. As well as, uh, let their investigations, you know, be completed as well, which I'm sure will net some results as well. So that, that's where we stand. Uh, I'd certainly appreciate, um, you know, all the emails and the information and the videos are great. The drone was great. Whoever had the drone up, uh, certainly gave us the, uh, the perspective there. And, uh, the lady who took the, uh, the video driving around the streets, uh, of course, I saw the whole Berlin shift there, of course, as I know they were. So, uh, doing, doing the best they could with a, with a really unwieldy circumstance. Uh, and again, you know, I, I think some of us have heard about that house before, I, but I, I know that the parties were not to that extent. Thank goodness. And let's hope we can, you know, stop that from happening again. And I, I know we will be able to with different, different avenues that we're, we're working on. So, uh, it's a shame, you know, to disturb a neighborhood like that. And, yeah, it's certainly public safety and a lot of other things too, creating a nuisance and many other, many other names we could call it. So, um, we're working on it. Council will work on it and all the town departments, I'm sure will be involved with something. That's, that's where we're at and, uh, we'll, we'll stay tuned, uh, you know, we'll keep discussing it in our council meeting. We'll get, like I said, we'll get an ordinance committee together as quick as possible and start working on that ordinance from the council perspective. So timeline wise, do you think the minutes I believe? Yeah, so we'll, we'll, tonight, we'll see, we'll take a day for the ordinance committee. Uh, we'll, uh, task, uh, attorney to not real and, uh, to get some, uh, get some language together, have some discussions. But, uh, obviously we have to be careful with the language, you know, as you know. Us attorneys know as we craft that language, we want to make sure it passes the test of a lawsuit or anything else. But, but there are ordinance that's already out there that we do.
No, though.
We'll work on that. So thank you all folks. Solve that problem as fast as possible. All right, so. Yeah, thank you all for coming. Appreciate that. At our consent agenda. So. But, uh. We have six items. We're okay transfer hundred eighty thousand as detailed on the company spreadsheet cover higher than budget expenditures identified accounts such as finance except monetary donations. Probably nine hundred sixty one hundred dollars to the Berlin Memorial Library deposit two sixty three into the friend of the library credit account. And purchase some adult summer reading prizes of deposit six ninety seven into the friend of the library miscellaneous account to purchase children's teen programs supplies. And they'll accept another donation, uh, per worth in total value of eight dollars. Number three authorized town manager to set for those values to round the board grant on behalf of the town. And to appropriate the funds, the part time help workers, uh, social security expense accounts. Uh, number four, uh, approved CFC North LLC to charge the registration fee one hundred fifty dollars for a youth soccer camp, which will take place July eleventh to fifteenth, twenty twenty two, uh, from nine AM to twelve PM at Sage, uh, at Sage Park. Number five, approved Metro Swim Shop to sell swimsuits, caps, goggles, bungee cords on Wednesday, Tuesday, second at Principal Pool. Participants on the Berlin Adult Swim Team. And six approved for all dog and swimming exclusive club, the sub group beverages, uh, and home needs at Principal Pool this summer. So those are our six, um, consent agenda items. Uh, any comments or questions? See, huh? Yeah. Go ahead and take a motion on that? Let me hear that. Motion to accept this six item. All right, thank you. Second on that, second number? Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Very nice, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, thank you. So now. Go on to our public hearing, another public meeting tonight. So. Need to, of course, meet with the town lawyer to discuss the following topics, a proposal from the Prudence Cradle Center and the Kentsington Congregational Church for the twenty twenty two CTN and, and a tax credit program and solicit, uh, citizen input and designate a Russian check of Rema. Town, town manager, the liaison for the town of Berlin and all neighborhoods, assistant manager for twenty twenty two. We call, we obviously call this meeting an order and that's the purpose. And, uh, now we would ask for public comments on this topic. There are any online or at first? All right, huh? Close the public comments, town council comments. Town council comments? All right, here we go. Go ahead and close out and, uh, based about that, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. At our new business wall. Thank you all. So.
Good evening, councilors. Tonight, number one is the local permission council grand adjustment. Even for, it's to appropriate the two thousand nine hundred fifty program.
Yes. Yes, so we just had our. Time meeting on that? So, uh, any other comments or questions from the council? Take a motion?
Sure, I move to accept the non-budgeted appropriation of this, uh, local prevention council, uh, two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars for the deposit, you know, local prevention council credit account, appropriate those funds to the local professional council expenditure account, subject to approval of Board of Finance.
Take a second on that? Any other comments or questions? Very nice, in favor?
I think I.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion, uh, motion carries.
Thank you. Tonight, number two is the, uh, paid on the community senior center. So, you know, we've had two public forums, and the seniors have discussed this. And at this point, uh, we are, or this report would have been a therapy.
Yeah, that was good, you know, a couple of good public meetings and, you know, a lot of folk show up, which created the seniors that are on the act tomorrow in the evening. Excuse me, got some good comments. Any different votes, any different walks of life and stages in life, so took all those to heart. And, uh, you know, we have still a lot of work to do. There were some, I thought, some interesting comments, a lot of things. One was a, which I don't remember back from when we started this, but the most interesting, one of the most interesting comments was that the residents from the neighborhood there were there. And we know it's a flood zone there. And I do think back to, to the architect's presentation last fall. And I, I do remember him saying, so this is, you know, obviously this is all for consideration as the council deliberates. And also, this is just, we're sending this to the Board of Finance, so have them take a look at it and they can give us some comments back, not, not for a vote yet, because we haven't decided anything yet. So they, they can take a look at what they, what they do best. But, um, it was interesting that I, I do remember, and we'll go back and review this, obviously, as part of the whole discussion. We're planning to be parts of this discussion, which still need to have, uh, was that, we're talking about building the pool. A pool kind of have a special vibe because it's in the flood zone there. Possibly the front of that property is, I don't know, it was a hundred year flood zone. I don't remember specifically. But I know certainly further towards the back of the property off the lower lane there, it does flood frequently. So, you know, whatever we put there, whatever we decide to put there, whether it's town building or, you know, whatever other option we use. I mean, I certainly better be sure before we put a forty million dollar plus building in a flood zone that they flood. Uh, the second year we were in, the first year, the first six months. So that's, and, and I know we haven't really gotten that far. I don't think that this discussion yet, we haven't gotten any engineering plans, you know, this was all sorts of public information. But it was a very important point, as they all were, but, you know, as far as the location, we didn't have other locations that were scouted out and that looked to be the best. And location wise, it may seem to be, um, and still to be determined, of course, but I just think we, we have to tread carefully. Uh, spending this type of, of, uh, funding, tax dollars. And, uh, so, you know, we will continue with the discussion, um, in our meetings and, uh, we'll have to maybe map out a little bit of a plan. Uh, what we wanna get up next, uh, as the council continues to discuss it. So that's what I, I just wanted to add that tonight and get it off to the Board of Finance just for having a look at, at, at advisory. You know, still with the financial part of it to help us out too. So it's, it's voluminous information and it's, it's, you know, it's a very difficult project, uh, to do for, but so anyway. Uh, you guys have any, any comments?
Just wanted to say, yeah, the mayor knows sometimes where it gets in the way. I couldn't make the first meeting. So I appreciate you stepping forward and running the program and, you know, kind of made a decision that since we ran the first ones. So, but you can learn a lot from people and that was the whole idea.
And they'll be more public, I think, as we go forward. Anything else, folks?
Yeah, likewise, I was very impressed with the turnout, especially at the first meeting. Uh, I know we all went to at least one of the meetings, um, in one capacity or the other. And, um, I want to say turnout at the first was about probably eighty plus, um, mostly senior citizens. But I'd say generally it was a very good cross-section altogether with young and old alike, voicing their opinions on the project. And, uh, bringing up issues like the flooding issue being one. Um, there was also one gentleman who, a younger gentleman who spoke, I thought, very, um, persuasively at the second meeting, who spoke to, um, the, the issues impacting, um, younger people with respect to facilities. So all in all, I was, I was really pleased with how the process went to start. Obviously, it's, like you said, uh, Mr. Mayor, it's early on. But, um, the more input that we get on a project like this, the better. And it was brought up at the public hearing and it's certainly worth repeating now that as we have these really large projects that are really big decisions. We want to act on behalf of the town and make a decision together based on what's best for the town and that's the best way to do it. So.
Thanks, yeah.
Just want to add to that. Um, I want to thank the committee that put all this information together and the leadership there. It was amazing. I mean, we could have possibly come to where we are now without all the work that you guys did. So, uh, thank you for those to the entire community for attending us. And I attended both of them and it was very informative, you know, great feedback from the community and that's what we need right now. We need feedback from everybody so that we can make this good for everyone. Thank you.
What else? Okay, thanks. Much, much more to come on this topic, as we're here for. So, number three.
You're gonna just forward it to the Board of Finance?
Uh, no, I can write. We don't need, uh, the mayor to vote on that.
I don't have to.
We're not asking for a vote. It's unofficial. Yeah, it's just, uh, informational.
Yeah, I think it's fine. And I've already talked to the Board of Finance.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Tonight, number three is purchase of three managed to be used, student transportation by the road of public schools. Company. And I think Jeff could know, yes. Get the picture on. We'd like to see you. Can, uh, beat up Ben and, 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 uh, you, Jeff?
Good evening, folks. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and good evening, members of the council.
How you doing?
All right. I couldn't really hear that well, so I didn't know if you had stopped.
We're good. The, the mic is yours.
It's all you. It's all you, Jeff.
No, me, huh? Once again, good evening, um, council members, Mr. Mayor, Tom Manager and Kate. Uh, thank you very much for bringing this up tonight. Um, been working with Kevin Delaney, uh, to get some funds together to buy some vans. Uh, as you know, we do this, we try to do this every year. Um, it started a, a number of years ago when we had to retire seven vans in one year. Um, they were very old, a lot of mileage and, uh, deemed not to be the kind of, uh, conditions that we'd like to have our kids being driven around in. So we started a program, um, With the town's help on every year to to buy some new vans and replace the older vans. This last, this this action in front of you tonight. Is is a is a great one, because it will finally get us to the number of vans that we need that the town, that the town in Redwood is supposed to have in this fleet. One thing I think is important, we're not buying just for the sake of of managing to, you know, put them into the fleet. And to have them sit there, every time we don't have this number, the correct number of vans in the fleet, it costs us more to run. The actual transportation program, because we have to use the correct number of vans and they're going to be more and more, and plus, if we don't have them ourselves, we have to rent them. From the the transportation company, now they do a great job for us, but it's certainly more expensive for us to rent vans than it is to have them just drive our own vans. So it's really an economic issue, and we're very pleased that we can get these three vans. We believe with what our projections are with these three new vans, which will take their their two thousand twenty-two vans, so they're not going to be here yet, or probably for a few months, but. We think we're going to be in a situation to have the number we need, so we won't have to rent any, and they're actually getting to the point where we're not keeping vans on the road that have so many miles that they're concerned. We still do things like. You know, fixing the vans that are there, we just put a new transmission there in one of our existing vans that we think is going to be on the road for a number of years yet. So we do a number of things to keep them in line, but this is a very important issue for us. We thank you very much for your consideration, these numbers are under state contract, I want to publicly thank Drangus Ford for. Searching for us to get. Two thousand and twenty-two vans that were very, very hard to find, and they managed to get them and put them and reserve them for us to come up with this P O today, so. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to. Chime in.
That's great, Jeff, thank you for that, we're happy to get, I'm glad, I I, as you said, I think I'm glad you found the van. It's a problem with anyone finding vehicles. Have a few, that, questions for Jeff, any questions? So we'll go ahead and take a motion on this issue. We got a couple of motions.
Yes, I believe you.
The first one is to waive the town's bidding requirement through the purchase of three two thousand twenty-two Ford passenger vans. Thirty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars seventy cents each. Totally with the amount of ninety-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars twenty cents. Just went to the state contract number nineteen P S X zero one six one. Ending approval of the funding transferred by the board of finance, this is in the best interest of the town.
Alright, thank you, second on that. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, vote on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? My motion carries. Sure you do, motion number two, second motion.
I move to approve this transfer of the funds from the townwide professional services. Development services and management personnel, development services pension, building maintenance repair, handle control part of SOR, emergency management. The M P A P. Department of Regional Health Services. B and A department head, B and A pension, all the general fund.
Take a second on that? Any, any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, vote on the motion, all in favor? Hope people's going to speak, but I'm here. I think all those were in favor, opposed?
Aye.
Oh, that depends, there we go. Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Good night.
Item number four is the authorization for the town manager to purchase a so on. For the model, the whole bunch space. This could should be the final. Should see. But, but.
Thank you, Jim, all to you.
Okay, thank you. The, as indicated, we talked about it a number of times, but we wanted to bring it back. The last version was authorizing the town manager to enter into revised agreement regarding the purchase of this one acres plus point one acre easement area. On Reservoir Road to connect Timberland to Reservoir Road and hopefully beyond. After that authorization, we signed the revised contract and did due diligence on the property, including an environmental site assessment and title search. The environmental site assessment recommended no additional action, however, they recommended that we make sure that the. Debris from an old shed is removed before we close, and the seller has has agreed to do that. And in addition, they recommended that we wood chip the chair, the trail. There was former agricultural use on the site, but just as a precaution, so we can do that as we clear the trail area, we can wood chip it, so. That's not an issue, we had the title searched on, there was some title, minor title issues from old probate. That have been resolved, so I think we're in a position to to move forward, and, you know, Jeff will certainly look at the final documents and. So it's subject to his review, and also Maureen will look at the final survey map and have to approve that, but. With those, with those reviews, we're asking for the authorization to go ahead and close on the acquisition of the property.
Okay, thanks, Jim, appreciate it, any questions for Jim? Well, I'm trying to get anything on this for a while, so we're all very. So. Do you hear, we're going to take a motion.
I move to authorize the town manager to acquire a forty foot wide lot. Twenty for along the western boundary of our schools at thirteen. Lot thirteen lots two and three. Point one acre easement, because of our road attachment at forty-two thousand dollars. So just review and approval of appropriate council.
Second on that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Imposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for doing this, thank you, it's good, a lot of work. Next two agenda items, they have two. Eso. So. This one is the item number five is a request of a waiver of Stuart Stevenson. Simon's here.
Mr. Simon, hello.
Hello. Historyless, historyless. Stuart Stevenson is actually the Atlanta Detroit Diesel, they're purchased out. So over the year, in the early part of the year, we spent some money for that, and then we had a couple pieces of equipment that we repaired. Pay all the bills, look like that, we're like way over the ten thousand dollar mark, and we're here at the.
Right, something's planned, all right.
So, well, that's next.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I see that's the next one, yes, I see that. So we need to bond for fuel now, so. Take a motion on this?
Yeah, moves to approve weakening the house bidding requirements to prepare Detroit Diesel engines, utilizing Stuart Stevenson. Twenty-five thousand seven hundred. Seven dollars, this is in the best interest of the town.
Take a second on that? Any other questions for Mr. Simon? Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Imposed?
So, great, thank you. Item number six is a request of a pool, just thirty-two thousand gallons of fuel.
Ouch.
Energy for this study in twenty twenty-three.
That's something you see. Wish I wasn't here. Okay.
So, we. We thought we were smart. Back when we started, everything was locked down, we bought. All the bigger contracts. Unfortunately, with the contracts, it's going to be just the diesel one. July first. The price for the trip. The value of the dollar eighty-three per.
Oh, man.
And we're home, you know, diesel has been up six dollars, five dollars. Six dollars for a number of months now. Oh. Sign it, if you just stand here and tell you all that stuff, but. Well, what I'm proposing is, is we take option A, which is we are going to lock into the differential, we're locking this for better, for differential, we're going to stay with extreme energy. Oh, it's going to cost us. Almost five hundred dollars over what the low bid was, and that's the differential, we're just paying for even the street and the truck to pay. The actual price of fuel, the stock exchange, and it's an average of what that stock exchange is, pardon me. And that that price would be the same, no matter if we did it with diamond oil, extreme energy, or any of them, we still have to pay the nine X stock. So, hopefully, hopefully. By buying, by taking that option down the road, there'll be some relief. I can't say some other, I can't care if you have anything. Go on, hold it for all, it's just terrible.
True, so. We all feel the pain together, so we certainly understand. Circumstances we are all in in this country with fuel costs, so. Do you have a town or job to work in? Okay. It is. Probably we can't do anything about it, a little town of Brawn here, others may be able to, but.
It's any kind of.
Yes.
It's all over the world.
Yes, no, I know, it's. Quite the, quite the world, but. Okay, so if there's no questions for Mr. Jim, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move toward the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three diesel contract, East River Energy, Gilbert, Connecticut, we want a differential option, probate number seven thirty. This is the best.
Second on that? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Motion for all, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, all right, motion carries. Thank you.
If I may, on number seven.
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know that the agenda is correct as far as what the motion should be, what happened was, this was a previous summer, you come in. Woody did notify me that you're changing it, and I didn't do my normal thing where I made a copy and kept it on my desk, so I got it fixed. So, I apologize, this was mixed up on my part, alright, so what you have, the agenda is correct, and what you should do is go by the. Before you guys try to explain.
Get rid of the water with.
No water for you tonight, that's it.
I didn't take it, it was free.
Oh, okay, come on, here you go, come on, I got an extra one. Okay, okay.
So, item number seven is to approve the transfer of funds. For just the new skid steer. The funds are from Mr. Woody.
Oh, Woody gets all the fun.
I know, he gets all the toys.
All the toys. How are you?
Currently, we have a two thousand and seven Bobcat eight three hundred, when it came out, we thought it was the best, and that was the way to go. We noticed over the last couple of years that we've just had a ton of electronic problems, it's got four-way steering, all four tires, turn at the same time, they get locked up, Jimmy's guys spent countless hours on the road trying to get it fixed. Over the last year, it's probably been down more than it's been up, no fault of anybody's, it's just hard to get parts, it's just an antiquated system, and Bobcat no longer is even making the all-steering three hundred. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to move forward with purchasing of the cat's skid steer off of the Sourceball contract. They're going to give us right around thirty-one percent discount and eighteen thousand dollars for the current trade.
Okay. Deal. Get any work done on that one? Okay, so any questions for Steve? Go ahead and take a motion on this.
First one, that's two, two, the Sourceball contract, number zero three two one one, cat, purchase of a new car filler, two five nine eight three H F compact truck, track window from H O at. Forty, forty-five thousand four hundred and fifteen more dollars, ending approval of the budget transfer, certified by it.
Second on that? Any other comments or questions? Yes, yes.
I just want to comment, Woody, the ground, whether it's here in town, local right over here, or across town, or wherever, look fantastic, your guys are.
Thank you, yes, they're doing a great job.
No, they really are, looks fantastic.
Appreciate it.
Say that before you vote.
Yes. As always, it looks great, I don't know if we have any, anything, Betterment Park is always perfect, if you're going to bet there, and every other place in town.
People have mentioned that.
Yeah. Oh, maybe we'll make some money for the town or something like that, what do you think? And now, and now Woody and his crew, wait, wait a minute. We'll give you a cut of it, don't worry, town will take a cut, and we can pay for the diesel fuel. There's always ways to make money, the island green areas, it's very striking in the spring, it really is.
Appreciate it, thank you, have a great night, Jeff. You might want to stay.
One more motion after that. So we have, did we vote on this?
No, we didn't, sorry, I interrupted.
No, that's okay, that was the, that was the comment question. Alright, so we have a motion on the floor, all in favor? Aye. Imposed? Alright, so, so.
Right, thank you. Item number eight is a.
Oh, no. We have a second motion, right?
Water waste treatment account, transfer. Second motion into this thing, I'll move to approve a transfer from the water waste treatment account to a thousand. Thousand dollars thirty-seven cents, storming late overtime account, two thousand nine dollars, open the general fund. Flatbed truck account, fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars thirty-four cents, wood chipper account. Thousand twelve hundred eighty-one dollars ninety-five cents, Bobcat accessories account, five hundred eleven dollars eleven cents. Expletive account, three hundred and forty-three dollars seventy-five cents, truck account. Dollars, the total of the house roof replacement account, four hundred dollars twenty cents, the waiting protection account, one hundred and forty dollars, grand body. Eight thousand eight cents, storage trailer, two hundred eighty-four dollars two cents, storage unit account, six hundred and twenty-five dollars fifty cents. Open the cap on the front, the skid steer account, the cap on the front.
Thank you. Second on that? Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Imposed? All right, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item number eight is to approve other transfer of funds. Create the playground. Kevin's going to take this one, but. If he has questions. His way again.
Woody, I go. We knew you weren't that.
Let's get out of that.
Right.
So, I guess, probably sometime around April. The director of facilities and Jeff Putin will walk around the building, come up with projects and things that need to be repaired. And the current playground at Hubbard School is the only playground that has not been redone in the last couple of years, and it's got some large cracks and needs to be replaced. Came up with a placeholder number of two hundred thousand dollars, which was a little jaw dropping, and they went back out and they started to figure out exactly what they need, so the game plan currently right now is, I think we're somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's to replace three sets of stairs, one in the front of the school, two in the fire, and rest in the back of the schools, which are disoriented, they need to be repaired, the railings are falling off, and at that time. Reclaim, repave the back playground, add some new basketball hoops, and at that, last time, I don't know if you guys had a chance to see the stencils they've done at Willard School and Bristol School, but they're very interactive, and the kids absolutely love them. And we're slated with a very tight schedule to start this summer around July twenty-third and be completed with the pavement around the sixteenth, six days before school returns for the fall.
Okay, and who who's doing the paving?
The paving is going to be done by glass up, the same way that goes all the paving, wall, brown streets, sidewalks will be done by, the stairs and everything will be done by the. And sidewalks will be done by, the stairs and everything will be done by the lady construction, and they work side by side.
Have you ever brought a bid for this, or we just picked? I mean, the only reason, and I know you had some other things in there, the basketball hoops, the stairs, so I get that, but I'm just looking at a hundred, I know it was two hundred thousand, which seems off the charts, but. So a hundred and twenty-five thousand, pavement, a parking lot at the fire department that has eighty thousand trucks for eighty thousand. This is a problem. Guessing a taco on top of like.
Yeah, there's going to be three mill, they're going to do two layers, two inch and a half layers. Make it three inches. I believe the paving on the back is like forty-seven thousand. The most expensive part is replacing the stairs. I think each stair is like sixteen thousand dollars. And I believe that BPW Michael Herring goes out to bid for the paving of streets and sidewalk contract as well.
Some concrete stairs.
I appreciate that. Okay. Okay, so that includes the stairs and the.
And the paving.
And the new hoop, you said?
The new hoops.
The paving is.
Three of them.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that, so that's fine. Okay, any other questions for Woody? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Yeah, who's approved a transfer of support from the school workers' compensation account, five thousand, schools contractual services account, Hubbard Playground account, all in the general fund. Improve or modify it.
Second on that? Any other questions? Questions? All those in favor in the motion? Aye. Close. All right, someone.
Good night.
Thanks, Woody.
Take care.
All right.
Item number nine. Need to appropriate two hundred and eighty thousand dollars outside police service.
Good evening. Every year, every year in the budget, we estimate how much extra duty police work will be needed. And there's a revenue line as we charge outside organizations where police support them for the cost of doing that, plus a markup for the use of the police vehicles. As we approach the end of the year, there's always an evaluation as to how close we were with the estimate. In this particular case, as you can probably imagine with all the work that has been going on around town, the amount was substantially lower in the budget than what actually occurred. So right now, we, we have two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars more in revenue than was budgeted. We're looking to appropriate that over to cover the higher expense costs of having police provide extra duty services. There's no actual tax impact involved here. These are all fees that are charged to outside organizations to provide the police oversight, if you will, on the job site.
All right, thanks. Any questions? Just kind of give us an example of what. Situation where the old drive is with the construction requests or.
I mean, I actually passed one today as I was going down Chamberlain Highway towards Timberland. They're, of course, paving that entire road, and there was a Berlin police officer there to make sure that traffic was aware right around where the flags were, the flaggers were over by the New Britain, Britain line. So in that case, you have someone who is providing the service off duty, but representing Berlin and utilizing the police car, so the traffic remains under control. That's done often on ever-source sites. There could be any number of paving jobs or any number of other groups. Cox Communication has used it. Comcast might use it if it's a larger project, those types of things.
Kevin, does this also go for social gatherings by community organizations that if it's a certain number of people, it requires a police presence there?
It certainly could. I mean, we do charge for some of what's offered, for example, at the Berlin Fair, and then some of that is waived in both instances. There are extra duty costs for the town. So in the case where social gathering does take place and that is either requested or required, then we would charge and collect the fee for that.
Any other questions for?
We call a meeting. It's forty-five P M, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. To prove a non-budget appropriation of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in the outside police services account, the extra police officer account. General.
Second on that? Thank you. Comments or questions from the council? All those in favor in the motion? Aye. Close. All right, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Didn't I have number ten, something we have discussed a few times about appropriation. So it's you now. Kevin, do you want to say something about?
Well, the, the town was awarded just over six million dollars through the ARPA program. We received the first half of that June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. And by the original law that was passed by Congress and signed by the president, we are to receive the second half of that money approximately twelve months later. So we're expecting to receive those funds before the end of June. To date, the Board of Finance and the Council appropriated one million dollars of that money to help cover general administrative costs, which is permitted under the ARPA regulations. Seven hundred thousand in the FY twenty-two budget, three hundred thousand in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This request is to appropriate the balance, five million, forty-eight thousand, forty-six dollars and sixteen cents to the HVAC projects at the elementary school. The goal would be to initially hire a construction manager who can help not just manage the project, but help establish a timeline between the three schools, the contractors, and a best course to follow. Whether it's purchasing a lot of items upfront because we're able to get them and avoid supply shortages, or whether to, how to, the cadence of the different schools and the like. And then beyond that, utilize the balance of the funds to begin paying for the construction work. The intent now is to address Willard first, is the oldest and most in need system. And, you know, that, that will fall to the construction manager along with the Public Building Commission, Public Works Director as liaison to that commission, of course, the facilities director and his team.
Discuss this many times, what to do with the American Rescue Plan grant funds, and we know we have these three elementary schools that obviously. Much work, probably the most important in today's world is the air quality, air tract system, so. Very good use of the funds to get started with Willard, the oldest school, and move on to the other two. It's one of the major projects we need to do in town the last few years amongst many, many other projects. It's wonderful, not wonderful, that we all had COVID, or we all had to go through COVID, but if we did get some extra funding, that would put to a good use here in Berlin, so. Discuss that at length, but any, any other comments from the council?
Question? Sure. Been a lot of discussion here. The five million dollar price tag. For. Five million, all over.
That's for bonding.
That's just for, right, we're not, we're not bonding. It's permanent, no bonding. The ARPA, the ARPA guideline. Yeah, no, that's. This is within the guidelines, yes.
I'm glad we're doing it, and I understand it's within the guidelines. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd rather go now than.
Yeah, no, no, Charlie, this is just, this is just free money. You don't need to worry about that, yeah. All, all our taxpayer dollars, that was.
If we borrow the money.
Yes, I, I believe that is the case. But, yeah, I mean, it's all taxpayer dollars, but it's nice to get some of it coming back to Berlin from our federal government, so that's, that's good. So any other questions, comments?
Figured investment in our schools, it's very exciting. Glad we were able to work together and see this project, hopefully to its conclusion, pending, obviously, Board of Finance approval. But it's exciting to invest this money in our schools and in our administrators, teachers, so. Looking forward to the project as it unfolds.
No more comments or questions? Take a motion, send it to the Board of Finance.
To approve create five million, forty thousand, forty-six dollars and sixteen cents in American Rescue. To the HVAC upgrade account. And the improve of the board of fire.
Second on that? Any comments or questions? Any none? One on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. A pose? All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm number eleven. The discussion, fiscal year twenty-three capital and need to capital projects. This is an item that needs to be removed on the fiscal year twenty-three budget. It'll be good for us to come back and revisit this, and I don't think any of us are going to go through line by line, but it's, you know, give a sense of the town's capital need and projects. Certain things that we have money maybe, and others we don't, so it's important that we look at everything and decide how we want to proceed. All of it you have discussed. What would you have?
Okay, thanks, Roche. I guess before getting into the numbers, I, I just want to kind of ground, whether it's public or private, when I kind of think about capital and where we spend it, there's sort of a spectrum of thought. There's the far end, which is urgent. These are critical matters that have to be done. They're pressing. Sort of, there's important items, and then there's the desirable items, the things we would like to do. Over the last two, three years, maybe longer, but at least the last couple of years, most of what we've come back to you at the end of the year and utilize surplus funds to either purchase or projects to engage with. Fall much closer onto the urgent end. We've actually had three different instances where we've come back and asked for funding, whether it was using state losecap grant money or surplus money to replace leaking roofs in different buildings. The municipal garage, highway department, South Kensington Fire Department. We've also had some critical needs for pieces of equipment that really are used regularly. You had one this evening with the skid steer. And so we've, we've spent a lot of time on, on what I would say is that end of the spectrum. We're continuing to do those things, but I think we're getting closer to more of the funding on the important side. And, you know, as you kind of look down on the first page on the list, the two items highlighted, you, you approved this evening, and assuming the Board of Finance approves the transfers, we will finally be back to a spot where we feel good about the school vans. For the last two or three years, we were doing the same with police cruisers. We fell behind on the police cruisers. And there were a couple of years where we actually funded police cruisers in the budget and also with surplus to catch up. So it's important that we remain diligent in keeping up with where we are on those items. As Steve mentioned earlier, we, we had recaptured the playground out at Griswold as part of the parking lot paving there. It's past year, in conjunction with the Board of Ed, we were able to recapture a good portion at Willard, and now this is Hubbard. So those are all positives. As we work down the list, you know, the next items in here have to do with server replacements. We really should be replacing our servers, which are really our connection to the, the digital world in the twenty-first century. We should be replacing those around every five or six years. These servers are eight years old. By the time we approve the funding order and actually implement, these items are going to be in the neighborhood of nine to ten years old. These are, these are everything from making sure we can connect with our police cruisers, making sure that we can, as, as much as maybe people don't want to do that, as we get into July, that our tax office can remain operational. That GIS, other things can remain functioning through the town hall. And then lastly, on the, the one grade is, is Willard upgrade for the fire alarm system. We've been working through the schools, first the high school during the project, then McGee. We did take care of Hubbard. That was completed this past year. We're going to do Willard, and then next go around will be Griswold to have upgraded all the fire alarms. So we're really trying to come back and ask for funding at this point for some of the most basic elements, either urgently needed, like I mentioned, leaking roofs and things like that, or most critical baseline capital items. I won't go through the rest of them because you, you can read them, but that's, those are the areas, we believe that there will be sufficient money at the end of the year to fund items one through four on this list. So that means we had about a three-point-seven million dollar request for capital, and we're projecting to fund about one point two five of that. So ultimately, what that means is about two and a half million of the three-point-seven million will get shifted out to future years, to the extent we possibly can do that. That certainly is, can create some problems. I just wanted to kind of ground everybody on that piece of it, and those are part of the annual budgeting process. The second page was the capital projects, capital. These are the larger projects, and so just wanted to kind of lay out the thought process now. Not, nobody's looking for approval of these items, well, except of course for the ARPA money that you just approved. But other than that, there's no approval this evening, but kind of the mindset of some of the bigger projects that have either been in the process or you've discussed. So police station renovation, the next stage that we were requested to look at was to put three hundred thousand dollars into having Jakumski and Humes provide a more detailed study. So there really need to be detailed plans in order to be able to move forward and actually engage in the construction. We have a solid fund balance, and on page three, I've kind of laid out where we ended last year in our audited financials. Certainly, the town used quite a bit of money with pension payouts and the purchase of two fire vehicles. But there is sufficient fund balance, and so I would propose to use that money. We also have to start considering what's going to happen with Board of Ed's storage area and the food pantry and storage area also downstairs. You know, the Board of Ed's storage area represents essentially the Sally Port when you think of.
MAGA people don't want to hear, they want to. It does seem to me there's some non-trivial number of people.
Sorry? Okay. And then the, the proposal would be to, to bond the actual construction. You know, the HVAC, we talked about ARPA tonight, and looking at Griswold and Hubbard going forward and looking at bonding for those elements as we have a better understanding of the dollars involved. You may recall last year that work was started on renovating personal soccer field, but as they got into the, the deeper plans and review of the field, it was a much larger project. And so anticipate about two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars more is needed, and again, proposing to think about using some of the savings to be able to take care of that project, put it to bed without borrowing funds. Excuse me. You've talked about the highway wash bay now for two, two, almost three years. We've, we've had a couple of times going out to bid and trying to bring those costs down. The town is, has secured reimbursement from FEMA from storm ISIS's last year. We've got about two hundred sixty-four thousand coming in, and so we're proposing to apply that money to the wash bay and use two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the savings to try to put that project to bed as well. That would address not just highway vehicles, but really all of the vehicles could be washed through that, through that wash bay, and also do so in a much safer area where there's less risk of injury, workers' comp claims for the workers. To the extent that the surplus may be greater than what is currently anticipated as we close out the year. Also looking at the town considering purchasing the fourth of four fire vehicles, the fire department and a strategy of replacing the four vehicles purchased right around September eleventh, two thousand one, so twenty-plus-year-old vehicles. One was already, we took possession in the spring, two more are on order, and this would take care of the fourth. And then finally, looking at summer of two thousand twenty-three, if we're working on HVAC at Willard, and then the summer school is moved to look at the Willard School parking lot as well, and trying to take care of that while the school is closed, using state losecap money. You know, with that, I'll kind of pause. This was just designed to give kind of a perspective of both the operating or, or budgetary capital items, as well as larger projects you've had, and the thought process we've had around. And the thought process we've had around how to fund those and the cadence of when to take care of them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just kind of note from, you know, he's having a difficult time.
All of us?
Yeah. So if anybody asks me to speak into the mic.
Can you hear me, Peter? Peter? Peter?
I can hear Kevin fine. Um, everyone else is garbled and there's some echo. Uh, when Jeff speaks or anyone not in the room, I can hear it fine. But unless, um, people are too far from their mics, et cetera, uh, and I just, uh. Got texts from other people listening and are having the same problem.
I mean, it's, it's the same. You guys get to go to hearing us.
I, I, I have the same issue. I, I, I've never had that before, but tonight it is difficult to hear.
Is this any better?
It is.
Yeah.
So, okay, living like this is better than. Yes, let's have to talk really, really loud. I can't get much closer unless I swallow it. Okay. I don't know how close to you. We'll yell, we'll yell. Better, Peter?
Yes.
Okay. That's what we'll do. Uh, if it's, if it's, if it's too high.
I can see all the levels.
Yeah. Yes, you just need to speak louder and clearer, I guess.
Adjust our own volume, right?
Speak to your panel at one point.
Speak in the diet.
Politician voice.
Yes.
I promise you.
Does this come with the magnifying glass?
Glasses are included. Glasses are included.
You can hear, you can see.
Yeah.
Just saying, it's a little.
All right.
Why don't we do this, uh? Please continue the conversation, but we'll also get a budget with help to you. Yeah, I'll leave very quickly.
Uh, and I know, I know on this, I know it's off this chart, I'm sure, because it wasn't in the budget or anything, but we're, I remember we're, I think the money we were talking about for the, uh. Kensington Fire Department Parking Lot. I think we were talking about maybe what, well, we don't know if surplus maybe or.
You had asked, uh. To, for us to, uh, ask the Board of Finance to make a recommendation.
Where to get them from, right?
It's on the agenda.
It's on our agenda.
On the, on the agenda?
Yes, exactly. Okay, good, good. Yeah, and I just wanted to track with that. One, one point, Kevin, can you hear it?
Yes.
Hearing?
This, uh, information was also. Uh, requested by the, uh. Commission. Or the, uh, the Senator and Senior Senator too, right? We asked for some of this information. And that packet, so as people contemplate whether we should move forward to that. Uh, this information wasn't there.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, good. All right, thank you. Well, uh, I'll break quick, quick items to discuss. Um, I'm not sure if anyone has any updates, but. Um, regarding the cost of the, um, police station renovation, I know there was some discussion. A couple of months back about, you know, construction costs increasing, I, I'm assuming that they have. In the last few months, like every, like everything else has, but, um. Does anyone on the council or Kevin or Roche have, have any updates in terms of? You know, what the dollars and cents look like in terms of an increase on, on what that project might be?
Wasn't there, um. Did you take into consideration? Wasn't there a line that took into consideration the cost of in, increase in, uh? Product. Construction goods. And there were services. I thought there was a line. I don't, I don't have that.
From, from the R T.
Yes, I think there was. Pretty sure.
There's a line in the budget for escalation. But I don't. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know that the number. Accurately reflects the current market conditions.
I was roughly thirty percent that it could be. Thank you. What was something?
Sounds like that could be, could be the ballpark. Okay, we're good folks. I have a question.
For me, just a follow up question. Anything you want us to do in terms of these projects, such as the police station? And some other recommendations, what's the, uh? You know, the wash bay and other things you want to think about it?
So with the washback, just out of curiosity, since you brought it up. Well, so then we at some point have a cost of a million dollars. What's that, approximately eight hundred thousand maybe or nine hundred thousand, I thought at one point?
I'm going to ask, uh, Mike's on the line, getting ready for the next agenda.
Okay.
You want to comment on the wash bay, Mike?
Absol- absolutely. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Uh, yeah, what we originally had a million dol- what happened was we bid it out with the, uh, the touchless, um, wash bay system, the automatic system that you can just basically like a car wash. But it's a truck wash. Um, we got the bids back. It was approaching a million dollars. We rebid it by taking, we, what we did was we looked at the budget, we realized, uh, it was a challenge. So we rebid it with the, um, the actual automatic system as an, an alternate. And that roughly is, say, two hundred thousand dollars. So what, what we want to do is actually go bid the building and the infrastructure, the new electric system, everything else. So we could plug, if we had, if, then we get the money for the automatic system, we can put it in, but the guys can at least be enclosed. We'll have a new bay for trucks. Um, and we'll have the actual physical structure that we can plug the new system in. When and if we get that money, but it was, um. Sort of value engineered out, recognizing we had some challenges with the budget. So right now, it's around, the numbers are around eight hundred thousand dollars that we would need. To, uh, comfortably rebid it.
So. Eight hundred without the automatic wash?
Right, and what the guys would do is they already have a system that they're, they could adapt the system they're using right now, which is really just a pressure washer type, a manual system. But they're exposed, it just ices up in the winter. It's like completely open. So this would be a heated. Uh, climate control building with the drainage system, so that will, it, it wouldn't be freezing on the floor. And then at some point, we could put that system or another system. Maybe we could just do two or three, uh, pressure washer wands that are fifty thousand versus two hundred. But it would give us a start to get this box at least, uh, put onto the, the new, I mean, the existing highway garage. And give us a start on the project, because right now I know we're not going to get a million dollars, you know, so. And with the FEMA money coming in, which, what, what, what was, what Kevin mentioned. That is really repaying what the highway, highway department and the Parks and Grounds guys did during the storm. So to me, it's sort of a nice, uh, use of that fund, those funds. So that's sort of where we are with the, uh, budget. Yeah, toward the wash bag. Yeah, and it's not, yeah.
Yeah, all right. I mean, because. We're very concerned for our vehicles, but we're more concerned for our employees that they don't trip and fall and slip on the ice, that we don't want that to happen.
Right.
Want to save our trucks and police vehicles, but yeah, I mean, I think the, the important thing is. Uh, enclosing the bag, heating it, so there's no ice on the ground when they're, right, trying to. Clean off their trucks and, and police cars, right? And, and I, you know, I've spoken to. Some people in our town and outside of our town about that, you know, the, the wand day, and I guess we all go to the car wash, well, someone was going to the car wash, but. But mainly the, the wand, to me, and, and, and to other people that are cleaning trucks and cars in other towns and even in our town, but the wand seems to. You can get more crevices, put it that way, right? With the wand to really get to areas that, if you do automatic car washes, you know, they do a job to a certain extent. But I don't think they really clean off the salt that we're interested in in their cars, so. You know, as long as we at least stick with that, maybe if we add some as we go forward. But the most important thing is it's heated. They can clean it in, inside that heated garage and they don't have any slip and fall issues.
Yeah, and, and one of the things, yeah, and, and some of the options could be, there's this undercarriage spray, because I went and toured a bunch of, uh, you know, actually other facilities and. One of the things they have at the very beginning is an undercarriage spray, which is basically it blasts to complete the frame as, as the trucks come in. And that's where the salt is rotting the frames out, as, as Jim Simons knows. So we could add modules. As we get the money and maybe there's some grant money out, we can, out there we can apply to as well to get that, but if we had, and also. Building the bay will give us storage for another two trucks. We're short of storage. Yeah, so it actually would be another bay. With the, with, with the drainage system and the water and the electricity, and we can add things as we, you know, either get the money, apply for and receive money. But the guys could work in there without, you know, the trip and fall and, and the icing conditions.
That is the biggest concern, no doubt.
Yeah.
Great, we can utilize it for, right, park the trucks in there. Yeah, that's great, too. Good? Yes, but I.
So, so we keep coming back.
Yes, what?
Police station, so.
Oh, yes, the police station as well, yes.
Something in the summer of twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
The things like, uh.
Yeah, that's what.
The relocating, the stories, the food entry, now all those things have to be done, like the, the squinter.
Okay, yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not asking you to decide now, but I want to do some talking to it and see. Um. What you want to do with it, otherwise it's going to get delayed by another year.
Yeah, now we gotta go, uh.
Was, was the chief looking at that and making some modifications to that initial plan, I thought?
Um, I don't believe, I only worked, I believe, with the, um. Police Commission Chairman a while back, and I don't believe they made any other changes. I don't believe, I, I think there was a couple. Reductions we were talking about, but the reduction, the easy reduction was for now was the outside. You know, shelter, right? Yeah, that was, that was easy to, you know, I'm gonna pitch on that leg.
Sallyport, you mean?
Sallyport, the, the, yeah, so all the cruisers would be.
Oh, okay, and where they park.
Yes, yeah, which, which.
I think so.
We can do it. I think we should do it at some point, but that was easy to at least take off initially, and we could always add that in at any time, right? But the main thing I consider, which is getting the, probably the interior of the building ready to go, right? Yeah, so I don't think they, I don't think they reduced anything.
Yeah, I wasn't sure of any changes.
The new chief had to get familiar with it, walk around with the president, you know, the head of this chairman of the commission. I think they were okay with it, the last I heard, right? I don't think we heard anything else. I'm the chief or I'm the police commission. Yeah, so I think we're good. Yeah, so, yeah, we need to get, so they, they need. They need, uh. They need stuff. They gotta get that done. At least department needs to get updated from nineteen seventies, right? So. Need to work on that. Yeah. Actually, good. Good, thank you. All right, where we at now? Twelve?
Yes, um, did I do number twelve?
Number twelve.
Yeah, lots of good projects. One magic project, that's what I have it soon. Uh, it's like service contract, right?
Yes, sir. Uh, yeah, we are at the, uh, exciting point of almost being able to bid this project, which is the almost four million dollar paving and reconstruction project of Christian Lane. Demming Road and Porter's Pass. We, uh, just essentially, and it's all that, the three point nine million dollars is from the lots of program. We have money set aside about three hundred thousand dollars if we need to, when the, when the bids come in, uh, we agreed to that with the, uh, the CROG, Capital Region Council of Governments. So right now, we're at the, the, the point where the CROG will endorse the project. And then send it to DOT, they bless it, and then they say you can go to bid, and they give us the money, which is nice. Um, we got last minute comments from the CROG. Which, uh, no one expected, and we're expecting some comments from the DOT because that's just what they do. So, um, what we did was we talked to the Fuston O'Neil, who's doing the design documents, and it's, it's basically the bid package is ready to go. We just need a little more money. We want to increase the, uh, contract. To, uh, by forty five hundred dollars to a hundred forty eight thousand five hundred to get us through these last two hurdles. Um, and we had, uh, we had some contingency, but we only had half of what we needed. So I'm requesting that we just increase that. We are, we have the funding, uh, set up. From the, uh, bonded road improvement account. So with this, I think we can actually get this, uh. Out on the street and get the contracts going.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Questions? On my. Uh, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I will turn off the state town energy to approve task amendment. Number four for the lots of. Road project of Christian Lane Demming Road, Porter's Pass. To increase contract twenty twenty one dash zero one with Bus and Neil of Manchester, Connecticut. But I'm out to exceed one hundred and forty eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Second on that? Uh, any other comments or questions from the council? Go ahead and go on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And I do number thirteen is the Neighborhood Assistance Act, which is having another public hearing. We receive some comments and, uh. I, we have three proposals, two from the Prudence Cradle Center. Uh, one for initiatives, and the second one is for programs serving low income people. There's one, um, the third proposal is from the Congregational Church, the first base of the neighborhood extension. Chilling through the J F S. So, uh, last time you did, uh. The program. And also appointed me at the liaison, but now that the, in the public hearing, you want to reaffirm that? So maybe, uh, action, the motion. Does you have any questions?
Any questions? We're good. We, we, we discussed it four hours ago. Meaning that I discussed it before, so, um, all right, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to approve prior support proposals from the Prudence Cradle Center. For the Kensington Congregational Church for the two thousand twenty two, Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act. And a, a tax credit program. The federal town manager was liaison, do you want it?
Of course, he's got no choice. He loves them. If you were just voluntold. Okay, that's the motion. Uh, second on that. Uh, and comments or questions? If not, win, vote on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Motion, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
So, agenda, item number fourteen. Is, uh, uh, membership. I'll, I'll give that to you.
Thank you very much. One bid term deserves another. Now, so obviously, as it was pointed out, which is an odd little. Piece in the charter that I don't know why the Board of Finance, as elected official, will be treated another different than a council member or Board of Ed or any other elected official. But that's what got, I guess. Put in there in the last charter revision, so, um, you know. We didn't see it and what else was on it. We'll fix it. Um, but. Before we do, I'll just, Attorney DiNocchio, I know as soon as it was recorded, we spoke about it and you gave your guidance, so if you were just for the benefit of the. Council, if everyone has not heard of it, for the public, um. How did we, you know, how did we get here? And obviously, we're planning on fixing it tonight, but I'll let you elaborate on that.
Sure, so Kate Wall called me, I guess it was last Monday. And, uh, indicated that she had been contacted by a resident who was concerned. That a member of the. Sitting member of the Board of Finance have been appointed to the Charter Revision Commission. The specific language in the charter is in four dash four dash one. And it provides in pertinent part. That while members of the Board of Finance, uh, Board of Finance members shall not. Hold any other elective or appointive office, nor be an employee of the town. There's a Connecticut general statute that's referred to as incompatibility of town offices. And it deals with a variety of office holders. The only incompatibility of office that's identified in the statute for Board of that, for Board of Finance members. The only incompatibility of office that's identified in the statute for Board of that, for Board of Finance members is having a salary town position. You can certainly understand that because if you're on the Board of Finance and you have a salary town position, you're dealing with the budget that your salary comes from. So that's prohibited by statute, so certainly nor be an employee of the town is a common provision that you see in charters. I've seen other charters that have prohibitions against Board of Finance members serving on a legislative body in Berlin, that would be the Town Council, which makes a lot of sense, or the Board of Education, which also makes a lot of sense. This one's very, very broad, and it says no other elective or appointive office. And you could have arguments about whether or not being appointed to a non-charter ad hoc Charter Revision Commission constitutes an elective or appointive office. My interpretation of it is that it does. So I told Kate when she called me to talk about it that, um, Mr. Bordenaro would have to be replaced.
Right, yeah, that's how it came to be, and, uh, yeah, that's where we're at, and, and just the rest of the question, I believe we have a member of the audience speak about as we move forward from that. Uh, till we got here tonight, obviously, we, you know, are gonna replace, make a replacement tonight, but, um, about the couple meetings that took place in the meantime, any issues with those, in your opinion?
No, you know, I've been contacted by a couple of people who were concerned about it. You know, the Charter Revision Commission process, uh, as you know, as the appointing authority, by statute, there's an initial public hearing prior to the commission even having any business meeting. So that public hearing took place, and then we've had two subsequent meetings. And the second public hearing at which the draft report will be presented is scheduled for a week from tonight. So my opinion is that, and by the way, the Charter Revision Commission also has its own lawyer, Steve Mednick. And he agreed with my opinion that until the Charter Revision Commission votes on the draft report, which it has not done yet, to send to that public hearing next week, there really is nothing that's binding or been done of any consequence by the Charter Revision Commission. So their next meeting is tomorrow night. They really need to, we've given them, based on the two meetings that we've had, we've given them edits, redlined edits from a meeting that I had with the town manager, the town clerk and the town finance director, as well as the meeting we had last night and the meeting we had last Thursday. So they have a draft report that addresses all of the issues that they've had a consensus on addressing so far. Tomorrow night, they'll need to discuss that draft report, decide whether they're ready to vote to send a draft report to the next, uh, public hearing. And then after that next public hearing, they'll meet again the following night to decide whether they're ready to send a draft report to the council. So nothing of any consequence has been done yet. You know, the other option would have been to say, okay, let's, you know, the council appointed Mr. Bordenaro. So I certainly, as town attorney, don't have authority to go to him and say, you're out. So, you know, we knew when it was raised last week that the council would be meeting tonight, and the decision was to proceed so that the, so that the Charter Revision Commission could try to continue to adhere to the fairly short timeframe that they have for discharging their, their duties. But there hasn't been any vote on any draft report yet, and therefore, if there's concerns about the member of the Board of Finance sitting on the Charter Revision Commission, well, he won't be sitting on the commission if you appoint somebody to replace him tonight. He won't be sitting on the commission when they actually do vote on the draft report, both in terms of sending it to the public hearing next week and then after the public hearing and sending it to the council.
And, and obviously, continue when they're, they're, they're working after that, so.
Correct.
Just along the way to go. Any comments?
Well, I thought, and I feel like there were some things that came out with this, that I, I feel there's a little bit of consequence, and I don't, obviously, you were saying, Jeff, that nothing is done until they send the draft report, they take the vote on what's going to be in the report is going to be done. But I think the issue that was raised here, to me, is there's a couple of different issues. There's sort of a, almost a moral type issue where, from what I understand, Sal knew that he was, he wasn't supposed to be on the committee. It then took, um, decided to go into the meeting and brought up a, a, an issue in the meeting that was not brought up in the public forum, was not brought up amongst us when we were discussing what would be in the Charter Revision. And now it's something that, that everybody is discussing. Now, obviously, at the end of the day, when the draft report is made, everything is going to be in the draft report, is, is what's going to be brought to us and then also put out to be voted on. But I, I guess the issue that I have is it sort of questions the integrity of the process. When you, the, the one individual who knows they're not really supposed to be there brings up a question, which is basically the partisan board of it issue. When, when, again, was not discussed here on the, the topics that we were going to put forth, towards the commission, and also was not brought up in the public comments. And I think that what we need to do as, as a council is to be transparent with each other. And also with the, the Charter Revision Committee, they need to be transparent as well with that, because it seems like there was nowhere that that was stated until it was brought up by Mr. Bordenaro to say, this is what we're going to consider. And it sort of was, to me, not transparent. It didn't, it didn't sit well with us, it didn't sit, us meaning me, but also other people that I've discussed this with. And I, I really feel like we need to think about that moving forward when we're putting this process out there. If there's a, a topic that we want to discuss, or at least we want to bring up, we should all be open about that. And we can have discussions about that. But if it's something that is just going to happen, that somebody decides they want to bring it up. Again, we have said in the past, whatever they want to bring up, they can bring up, and that's, that's fair game. But that's not something that we had pushed forward to the committee to be a, and, uh, something that they need to, to discuss and to look at. And to me, uh, it, it doesn't sit right when somebody just decides to bring something up.
No, point taken, but remember, having been through the other Charter Review Committee, um, things came up all the time throughout the discussion, and that is the nature of the beast. When you open that charter, whatever the council wishes may or may not be, it's not coming from us. Doesn't have to come from us. But you have the right, anybody in that committee to bring something up now. Sal to be there, not be there, um, he brought something up, but doesn't say it's last, it's voted, it's still got, nothing's voted on, so nothing has been done. Even bring it to the council. And, um, you know, there's no, I, 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 I don't know, people are looking for some grand conspiracy. I don't really see anything. I mean, it's an overlook in one, what, three words in the charter that were revised many years ago. In my opinion, certainly no violation of any state statutes. And, um, you know, the council doesn't have that, uh, restriction on it. I don't really see why the Board of Finance should, but it's there. And of course, we're going to follow it now that we are notified of it, but, um, I, I, I don't know, I mean, it's, it was brought up by, and there, but no, no action was taken. And they could bring up ten other things tomorrow night, right? They can, you know, I didn't hear, I didn't hear anybody on the council here say they want to eliminate the Board of Finance. That came up. That came up from the public, that came up in the meeting as well, right? So that got mentioned and we didn't, we didn't send that to them. So I guess I could turn around and say, yeah, why are we doing that? Why are we talking about that? But we, remember when we started, I mean, you know, to go into this process, we know once the charter gets open, everything is fair game. So whatever that committee so chooses, now it's going to come to the council, you know, the debate, what they send us, of course, uh, and, and part of the process, as do the voters ultimately, which is ultimately where it's all headed anyway. So whatever gets, you know, through that committee, through the council, it's going to the voters where it should be. So remember last time, a lot of things did pass that, that were thrown in that charter vote. Many, many things that were brought up, maybe probably too many to send out to the voters, but we're trying to, you know, keep that down as much as possible so we don't overburden the, the voters this November, because I have put like a state question on there, I did some other issues that, you know, that, but decide, decide like any people, but. Um, so anyway, I, you know, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, Mike, and I, but I, I just, I don't, I don't think it's a concern because they, they didn't vote on, you know, on that issue publicly, so they'll have plenty of chances to vote on whatever they come up with. And again, the ultimate vote is in November, or whatever they put on there, but, but, and that, and that's just the risk. I mean, that is the risk that whoever wants to bring up, can bring it up.
My, my, what moving forward is that the committee decides that knows that this is very important stuff we're taking, we're trying to save the town hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
I'll take the lines again. I don't want it to get lost in, in other, better, in other languages, but, you know, it's not really specifically.
Yeah, well, they can, right, I mean, we, we have it, but, you know, our purview wants to send them on their way and to their, they know, they, that's their purview to bring up whatever it is, you know, and, uh.
I have a question.
You do? Yes, sir, Peter.
Um, you know, we all agreed when we started out on this journey that we would find people who would want to follow our wishes and just change the few things that we've mentioned. Now, the Democrats vetted their people. Now, the other night, they take a three-two vote to have a partisan board of it. Now, didn't you vet your people? And is the person we're putting on tonight, have they been vetted? That they will not stray from what our original intent was?
Uh, I don't think that was an official vote, was it? I, I, I mean, I, I don't know what, I don't, I, I can't, I'll let Mr. Denofrio answer what happened at that meeting, but remember, we, I guess, people forget what we said. Yeah, we had some wishes from the council and we left it open to what people thought on this bo, in this body, but always said, they are in charge in the Charter Review Commission. That's how it works, that how, that's how it worked last time. I mean, quite frankly, last time, I wasn't happy with a lot of stuff they did either, but they, you know, they had that authority to do that. And, um, again, so I was going to the voters anyway, at some point, but, uh, I, you know, that particular issue, an issue, it's an issue. I mean, uh, you know, some people, I don't know, a lot of it, some people may like it, I don't, I don't know, that's a whole different debate for another day, but, but I, we always said they can bring issues to the table. That is the nature of the beast, unfortunately. That's why it was a hard decision open the charter, because again, last time, way too many things got involved in that, right? We changed our whole form of government last time, let's face it, right? We voted for the mayor and a whole bunch of the, and the Board of Finance, so. I, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't, having gone through it last time, Peter, you were here, I mean, it's, I don't, I didn't find that unusual because we knew that's what happens when you open. And not always the happiest of occasions for everybody, but that's, that's, that's what the nature of the beast is. I mean, we certainly had a overriding problem to, to try and, uh, give us some more authority to work on fixing the DNA. Uh, but that was only the priority of everybody, it was a little, like, and everyone, obviously, but it's still, everything is free game. Again, we're here tonight, Board of Finance, let's get rid of the Board of Finance. None of us said, talked about that, but if that's what they're going to debate, then let it be, let it be so, I guess, I mean, that's what they can do.
Well, is our potential candidate, has he indicated to you what his wishes are?
Okay, no, I guess we can ask him tonight, he's sitting right here, it could be Charlie Panessa. Move the nominee and put him on the, uh.
I'm sorry, what was his name?
Charlie Panessa, right here. He's vetted. He's not on the Board of Finance, so he could be put on a committee. If I may? Yes.
I would say the part about this that doesn't sit well with me is the, the fact that the, the chair, or I guess former chair, whatever we want to refer to him as, had knowledge of the fact that he was, it was unlawful for him to participate in the proceedings and yet chose to participate in two meetings thereafter, um, as, as Counselor Yurinaga had indicated. Um, all we have is a group is integrity. We are the stewards of integrity for this town. We take an oath to uphold the laws of this town, take an oath to uphold the charter of this town. And once the integrity of this process is called into question, our integrity is called into question. And I understand that, um, you know, no formal votes were taken. I understand that, you know, there was limited formal impact of the decisions or, or discussions that were had throughout this process. But the fact of the matter is that these discussions are on the public record. And so long as there is some semblance or some appearance of a lack of integrity, our integrity is a group is called into question. I mean, may, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're an attorney, I'm an attorney, Attorney Denofrio is as well. Um, all we have is, we, 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 we need to protect the integrity of the process. I'm a process oriented person. And whatever it is the people decide, at the end of the day, at, at, at the end of this process, I can abide by that. I understand that it's, it's the people's choice. Ultimately, it will be on the ballot and it will be their decision to proceed as a town. And I can abide by that so long as the process is fair, is transparent and is integrous. And I, I've been really frustrated with this process so far because we've had an extremely tight, uh, a tight deadline. And now this is yet another delay in the process, um, when in reality, we have a very limited window of time to act. And, uh, you know, my instinct is to start from the top in it. I think that is the only way to have a process that people will not call into question the integrity of it. And I think that point was raised in, in the public comment section of this, of this meeting, and I, I, I think it's a really good point. And, and I understand that we're up against the gun. That's just the nature of when you open the charter, and I know there's a lot to decide, but I feel very uncomfortable moving forward now that it's out in the public and there is some, there is a stinker on the process, to put it, to, to put it very gently. And I think, you know, we need to do what we can to put the stink away. And, um, as I said before, I think it, it bears repeating. I understand that the, the Charter Revision Commission has its discretion to act according to its own priorities. I understand that. Um, and that is, as you said, as you, as you very, you know, discreetly said, it's, we, it's a risk when you open the charter. Um, by the same token, members of the Charter Revision Commission are members who represent the public trust. They represent the public interest. And my issue with some of the matters that were discussed at these meetings is that the, the, I, I call it the question whether or not the people actually want these, and we'll find out absolutely in November. But it wasn't addressed at the public hearing prior to the meeting last week. It wasn't addressed really in any of our discussions prior to, which, uh, you know, the, the chairman, or former chairman, however you want to refer to him, was privy to some of those discussions. And, I mean, quite frankly, I, I think some of us feel a little blindsided by it. And again, I understand you, you sacrifice an element of control when you open up the charter. Um, that doesn't take away from the fact that I'm a little disappointed with how the process is played out thus far.
I'm, I'm curious about the meetings too. The first meeting, I believe some discussions were delayed because people didn't attend the meeting. Am I correct on the, we had the attendance on all the meetings? I'm just curious of the members of the four, the five people who attended and how long they were at the meetings. I'm just curious about that too.
That would be within the minutes, so.
So do we know? Can we see that? Find that? Will we find it quickly or not? How quickly can we find that? Or if anyone on the commission is willing to, uh, step up and say, who was at what meeting at the time and when they showed up and, you know, so I mean, we want to go down this road, we can go down it all night, but I, I just don't, you know, yeah.
I don't think we'd make the process more this agenda in the restrict the members that you appoint, what they could start. That's absurd to create a public that's sent up forward to do your bidding. You're creating a committee to be thoughtful and get public input, and they should be free to think the way they want to.
That's what we said upfront, that's how it works.
We, we have, it's absurd.
But so, so can we, so, so can we, can we find the attendance on the meetings? I'm just curious. No?
That, that's okay, because, because I'm aware.
That, that's okay, because, because I'm aware of the attendance of the meetings.
Okay.
And I will just interject here by saying that there were accommodations that were made for several people on the other side. Okay, since we're splitting hairs here, that were traveling, couldn't attend, had to leave early. So, we've already, you know, speaking of time constraints, okay? We've already tried to accommodate everybody's scheduling without having to push this out, but I believe that the initial kickoff was already put, put out by at least a week and a half. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. I will also add that I believe our council, legal council here in town, also indicated that it was okay for Mr. Bordenaro to stay where he was until the new person was appointed. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, Attorney Donofeu, are you, I, I think I can see you. So, you know, in defense of that whole situation, um, that there, you know, it's not okay. If you look at the whole picture, we're doing the best we can to move quickly forward and make this decision so that the people can make their decisions. And time is of the essence. I don't know, what do you think to achieve, Jack? We've been as transparent as possible. Nobody picked up on the fact that Mr. Bordenaro should not have been the head of that committee. Nobody. Not intentionally.
And quite frankly, my suspicions were when people didn't show up for the first meeting, that perhaps people were looking to delay the process. I thought that when I heard people not showing up. I mean, they volunteered to be on it, they were vetted apparently, but they couldn't make it because they were somewhere else. Well, that's not vetted very well either, if we wanna talk about that. I mean, you know, we had a hard time, which is, remember, remember, we started with seven, we had to go to five. Quite frankly, couldn't find the people to make that time commitment, very, very difficult. It's a huge time commitment and it is very press for time during the summer months, which we'd like to, we'd like to, you know, maybe go out and have a little bit more fun than a Charter Review Commission. Uh, so, you know, we've had issues from the beginning, uh, on, on all sides and all people involved, so. None, an integrity violation, at least I don't think so, on people not showing up for the first meeting when we know we had a tight schedule. I don't know. I mean, you know, we don't want, it's, it's, there's no reason to go down that road, but if we have to, we will, but this was just an innocent error. I mean, believe me, we tried to get this wrong as fast as possible and we had a shrink of the pie for that very reason, so. I don't know what to say, I mean, we went with legal counsel, we have an additional legal counsel that gave us the same advice. Uh, I, I, I don't, I, I don't see the issue, and as again, whatever we bring up. Um, if we don't agree, it's going to the voters. So, they can do what they want with that, you know, those questions as a guest there. I mean, believe me, I thought, you know, something was askew here. So, I, 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 I find it odd that that little three words got put in for the Board of Finance. Why would they be treated any differently than the council members? I mean, this, this doesn't make any sense. If it was a major, you know, mistake, I get it, but that's just, uh, wh- whatever their thoughts were back in the day, if they were, but. So, I, I, I don't, I don't see an issue to start all over again, because nothing's been done. Really, nothing's been done.
And, and, and just, for the record, I, I would never assume that face from another member of this body, from another member of any appointed body. Um, which is why, you know, frankly, we opened up the charter discussion in the first place. The assumption at the outset is that we're on the same page, we want to do what's best for the town, we wanna act in the town's best interest. And, um, my, my only concern, as I said before, was with the semblance of a propriety. And, oh, I think, you know, to the extent that we can do that, we should rectify that with the public, I'm not sure how. Um, I think this discussion has been helpful thus far to get it out on the public record. I know some of us have probably been stewing over the last week over how to address this, but, yeah, I mean, I, I think to the extent that we can, we'll, we'll, we'll have to rectify it if we haven't already.
Well, we are, that's what we're here tonight for. And, and when it first came to light, I immediately was called by, you know, Kate was told, you know, Kate was told by the public, the notary, and the other attorney that's involved, and, you know, we talked about how do we, how do we fix this right away? This was the legal advice we got, um, uh, since no decisions are being made. We're paying two attorneys to give us the advice, I mean, I know, we're attorneys too, but, you know, we're, we have to step out of the process.
I would not want that job.
No, uh, no, it's a tough job, uh, so we pay them for that, for that, the luxury of having that, those decisions, but. Nothing is done without, you know, legal payment, legal advice from our, our corporation counsel. And of course, in this case, an additional attorney, who's, we've got some expertise here, so. I, I, I don't know how else to rectify it to the public, because I don't think we've done anything wrong, other than oversight, which somebody called us on, and I'm glad they did before we got further in. Actually, it was good to find that out before we started taking votes and, and we turned it back to the council. So, in my mind, in the end, I mean, I was not happy to hear it initially, like, ah, you know, oh, no. But it's good, it came out then, we were able to rectify it early. So, that's, I think it was a good thing, how it happened. And when it happened, especially, I was, that's where we're at. So, we have another nomination, which would be Charlie Panessa. Certainly not, he, he's, and, and, you know, a drug, it's, it's certainly capable of speaking for himself, but, uh, first of all, it's difficult to go back and find another person that wants to commit that time. Uh, you know, we all commit a lot of time, but, but as I've learned and, uh, in talking to different mayors around in, in small towns, um, it's difficult, you know, the people that step up and want to run a town or be involved, or probably, or they're all on boards and commissions now, or typically elected officials, right? When you go out to, to find people for a, another committee like this, which is a lot of work, and, and pretty much, no matter what happens, uh, in November, it's, it's thankless work, let's face it. And, you know, so it's, it's hard to find people, so it's a difficult, difficult problem, and, you know, we can only fill the, the slots as, uh, you know, as the best we can, so, so Charlie, I don't wanna say twisting any arms, but, but no, so Charlie, Charlie works very hard for a living. He's employed as most of us are sitting here. Um, uh, so, uh, he, he, he agreed to do it, uh, and, uh, he's gonna work hard. And then Charlie, as you know, has a very long history on the council, but predates all of us, say, well, him and Brendan predates the rest of us sitting here. Peter, too, I think you were there maybe earlier, too, but, so he's got a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge, which I think is important, you know. It, it's tough to take somebody in, I mean, there's other people we thought of, but, you know, you know, we have two people. The other two people that we put on, yeah, we vetted them, we talked to them, but, you know, they, they don't necessarily have the breadth of knowledge that, that, you know, people have been involved in the process longer have, so, you know, they, they need, uh, you know, some direction themselves. So, you know, again, it's difficult to find people, but, so hence, Charlie would be, uh, the choice to nominate for, to replace Sal.
We're sure that Counselor Panessa can participate?
Yes, we have, we have, we have.
You know, we have provision in the charter. And we're gonna.
Someone, uh, oh, sure, someone.
Maybe we should check with Attorney T.
We have, no, we have already done that, trust me, and, and with.
Go through this again.
With the other attorney, yes, I forget, I'm sorry, I forget his name, I apologize. But, um, yeah, no, we've, we've checked again, as we thought we checked the first time, Jack, you know, really, listen. It was not pretty to hear that at all, you know, it's, it was difficult, you know, but there was no, uh, no, nobody knew that. In fact, it surprised myself, I ran, ran right to the chart and said, what? At this, uh, but there's those three words, other appointed offices, whatever.
And I guess, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You know, just, the rush, we're thinking about the timeframe, you know, maybe upfront. We didn't do a good job, was having this review to make sure, because, you know, you look at some of the, the person who spoke tonight and said that they spoke at the first meeting, I, I haven't watched any meetings, I didn't attend these meetings, I didn't even know this was happening until tonight. I don't remember the, actually, the agenda yesterday, but, um, the former Board of Finance Chair and then someone that's on the Finance Board, spring up a topic of getting rid of the Finance Board, which we didn't talk about, and the person on the Finance Board was nominated to be on this Charter Revision Commission. Um, you know, we could go down that road, too, but, uh, we need to move forward, it's, it's very, um, you know, important things, especially in the finance of the V and A, and I think the message is clear that this is what we need to do. So, let's get through it, get this going, I mean, we, we had more handcuffs on certain things and we need to take that.
I just, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just have a quick logistic question on how is this gonna work when the council reviews the Charter Revision Commission drafts? I just, I just wanna hammer this out now, I guess, that we don't have to do it later.
Question? Figure that out.
I'll be cordial, Jeff, I mean, I had no idea myself, so I'd be curious if your attorneys and officers, stuff like that.
Well, I mean, the, the process, as you know, is that the Charter Revision Commission sends to the council its recommendations for, uh, for changes. So, you know, you're gonna have one of your council members that obviously, well, not, I, I guess there's a possibility that, that if he's appointed, Charlie may not agree on a vote on a particular item that ends up in a draft revised charter. So, the, the, the bottom line is, it's something we'll have to deal with depending upon what the recommended changes are and what the council's position is on it, you know, if it's something that, that Charlie, uh, had a problem with at the Charter Revision Commission level, then, you know, we'll have to figure out whether that presents a conflict for him at the council level. But it's gonna like depend on what comes to the council and what the council's pleasure is with it.
Why be allowed to go on the council decisions or should I abstain at that point?
Well, again, it's gonna depend upon what your position was on an item at the, at the Charter Revision Commission level. I mean, look, the, the charter provides that the only prohibition for council members is that you can't hold any other elective office. Okay, so there's no, there's no charter issue. And the statute provides, as we talked about ad nauseam in the beginning of the process, that you have to have at least five, no more than fifteen. So, we're okay there, assuming that we have five. Uh, no more than one-third who, of whom can hold any other public office, you recall, that's how you ended up going from seven to five, because you had more than a third that held other public offices, and not more than a bare majority of whom shall be members of any political party. So, there's no statutory or charter issue with it, which means we have to deal with it according to the ordinary rules of, you know, decorum and Robert's rules, to the extent that there's a vote on a particular item that we think, uh, Charlie could, should consider abstaining from, then we'll have to deal with it at that time. But there's no, there's no inherent problem with it, is what I'm saying. There's no charter issue, there's no statutory issue, but depending on a position that Charlie takes. In other words, let's say that there's a particular question that the Charter Revision Commission votes, whether it's four to one, three to two, to send to you. And let's say Charlie voted against that item. Then we have to consider whether Charlie has a conflict with respect to that item, because he voted against what the Charter Revision Commission sent, and then he's gonna be sitting as a council member. So, we'll just have to see whether that happens or not. We don't know right now, as we sit here, whether that'll even be an issue, if it is, we'll deal with it.
Has this ever happened before? I'm, I'm not familiar with past Charter Revision Commission, but have we ever had a council member sit on the Charter Revision Commission? Like, there were any council members, last time was, okay? I don't remember them for, 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 I don't. I can't, it was a bigger, uh, girl.
It wasn't in twenty eighteen, but, um, there's been several Charter Revision Commission, and I'm I'm not sure, I can't remember, but I, I don't think it's, I mean, I don't remember it being an issue with somebody from the council sitting on Charter Revision. But I, I don't know, in a while. Peter, you've been on Charter Revision before, as you've had times when Charter Revision has had council.
I, I think in seventy-six. But I can't, I can't remember who it was, but my recollection, it was a large charter revision, it was fifteen of us or so. I think there was at least one member, see, I think, we didn't have a council back then. It was a, um, Board of Selectmen. So, I, I can't, I can't swear to what I mean, I remember I was on it.
Were you formally appointed because?
You can, yes, well, if I were you, I'd go for that door right now, it's best, you can go.
This was not my first chance to spend my evening. The mayor asked me to step in to help the town because the situation arose, and I believe it was obviously overlooked by everyone. It was, uh, an accident, it wasn't intentional. And the mayor said, would you do it, because you really need to do it, getting stuck that, that, uh. But I just wanna warn the council, I will bring up any issue I deem relevant, and I would expect everybody else on the committee with me to do the same. I don't wanna see anyone hamper in their thought, everyone should hear me speak, what they think we should work on. I understand the council's guidance, but I'm seeing it more as a minimal, my position. I'll work with that, I'm not gonna try to run wild or bring up crazy, overwhelming ideas, because we have to keep it direct into the point where voters are understanding that, that's where I've got problems. I, last time, accomplishing a lot of the bookkeeping, I, but, that's where I'm at, I hope the council, but.
Okay. Uh, so, go ahead, I forgot what we already did, how did we do it last time? I forgot, all right.
So, I, I do have another question.
Yes.
Counselor Panessa, gonna be the chair?
Yes, that was the plan, okay.
So, I try to not feel, when they go to vote, do they both nominate, um,
Oh, sure.
Um, uh, Counselor Panessa to the Charter Revision and then have another vote, see him as chair, or is it okay if it's the mayor?
Separate motions, please.
Thank you.
It brings up another question, no?
Running yourself into the commission.
Yeah, uh, another question, okay, I have a lot of questions. What do we think, Jeff?
My recommendation would be that he should abstain from both votes.
I know.
Okay.
Motion to nominate Charlie Panessa to the Charter Revision.
Second that.
The nominations, they're not, uh, close those nominations. And, uh, all is in favor? Aye, aye. Oppose? You can't say oppose, sure. All right, so, so, so. Just for the record, I don't mind you saying who's going to walk. And we'll, we'll make another motion. When Charlie is the chair? Okay. Motion to nominate Charlie Panessa, the Chair of Charter Revision Commission.
Yeah.
Thank you, uh, so, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Aye. Can I, can I have your decisions voted by, abstained from the original one? Other, other questions?
Questions?
We're getting very philosophical. Any questions?
Yes, I don't know. Just pushing my thorns on me, this blog.
What say you, Mr. Attorney?
What, what was the question, I'm sorry?
So, Jack abstained from voting Charlie on the, the commission, now we have a vote for chair. Can he say something or should he abstain because he didn't vote to put him on?
He doesn't, he doesn't have to abstain on both if he doesn't want to. He doesn't, he doesn't have to abstain on both if he doesn't want to.
For the sake of consistency, I'll abstain from this as well. Alright, so, so he abstained from, from that.
Okay.
So, two to one.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. Or our condolences. Oh, Peter, yes, Peter, Peter, Peter. We can't hear you. Peter. Maybe you can't hear us. My goodness. Yes. We can't hear you now.
Peter, you muted.
They can mute it, maybe. So.
You had to do both yes for the first one? Second one? Wanting him as a champ?
I can't, can't.
Just for the record, can you speak up, please?
No, I don't know if you can hear. Peter, can you hear us?
I don't think you can hear us.
Can you hear us, Peter? It's muted.
I know it's really bad for everyone listening to the whole thing.
Yes, I can't hear any.
Yeah, it's in and out.
So, question to you, the first vote we took to appoint Charlie.
Yes. Yes. Abstain.
The second one, to appoint Charlie as Chair.
Abstain. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'd be good.
Thanks.
So.
So it was, it was, so the final vote for? My mic is not. Kind of. Alright, so for the, um, motion on for name Charlie as the chair, it was a three yeses, no, no votes, and three abstentions. So it passes.
Okay, I voted no for chairman.
You voted no for chair. So it's three, three yes, one no, and three abstentions.
It was the second one.
On the first one, you voted?
Yes.
Yes. Well, that was hard.
Okay, we're done?
We're done, okay. Thank you.
So the last, the final margin I am is, uh, I got fifteen of the violation of ethics policy. Jeff, you wanna take this one?
Sure. Uh, as you know, there was a finding of a violation back in December. The, uh, last time that we discussed the matter, I told you that the, um, matter had been appealed, the decision of the Board of Ethics had been appealed to Superior Court, and that the appellant had filed a motion to stay enforcement of the, uh, decision by the Board of Ethics, enforcement, of course, by the Town Council. You had instructed me that you were okay, the Town Council was okay with forbearing from taking action on the penalty phase, but wanted the ability to discuss the matter. I conveyed that to the court. Um, the the court denied the motion to stay. Um, you know, I still think that the position that you took with respect to not taking action on the penalty phase was a reasonable position. And one of the reasons why the court denied the appellant's motion to stay is because the Town Council is not a party to the administrative appeal, so the court doesn't have any jurisdiction over you, and the court acknowledged in its decision that, uh, the Town Council voluntarily agreed not to take action on the penalty phase, but, uh, because it's not a party to the appeal, the court has no jurisdiction. Um, that was really a secondary reason for denying the motion to stay. The primary reason was that the court found that the appellant just didn't meet her burden of proof under the statute in establishing a likelihood of prevailing unmerits of the appeal. So that's where it's at. I sent the transcripts to Kate. I believe Kate circulated the transcripts to the council. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at them. Um, but that's, that's where we're at. We'll be filing our, our record uh, this week. It's due next week. We'll file it this week. And then briefs will be due over the summer. And then probably at some point in the fall, there'll be argument.
So, in, there were two very long, uh, transcripts. Uh, and, uh, I, I, I see enough. I didn't get through them all yet, but, uh, but there's a lot of exhibits that they talk about, which we don't have those either. So, again, you know, I guess you're asking us to sit, uh, here as deciding uh, group body, and as I asked, you know, said before, we need to see everything, obviously. To make the decision as anybody would, and make a decision, so. I don't know if we could get all the exhibits to us and, and the exhibits, I mean, all this, this public record, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So, I would want it, you know, on our agenda, and I want, I want things out in full transparency to, to everyone. It's, it's an open, uh, hearing now, as far as our hearing and everything from the Board of Ethics is released to the public. So I think the public should have a right to review this. There's no reason to conduct this and see it at this point. So I know we were sent the, uh, two transcripts, but uh, if we can add the exhibits to it and add it to our agenda next time, and hopefully have a little more time with our voluminous degree. Uh, but, but we can, you know, read through it and have at least some discussion. I know we're not making any determinations, so we'll let the court do their job, but um, it's certainly worth discussing, it should be discussed. It's an ethics violation. So, um, need to be, uh, transparent with the public here, right? I just heard that before, but, so we should get, but we need exhibits.
The town clerk, the town clerk's office has all the exhibits.
Okay, so. Yeah, and we'll put it on the agenda. Yeah, no, no, I didn't know if I started reading it today. No, I started reading it, and I said, you know, they're talking about all the exhibits. So, you know, we don't know what they're actually talking about without seeing these. Agenda for next meeting. Yes. Yeah, yeah, I mean, because, I mean, they're, you know, they're one transcripts there. I don't know, the one I'm reading, the first one's a hundred pages, I think.
Speaking of transparency.
Yes. And he didn't hear any.
With you. You know, he's having difficulty with audio, so he's on the speaker on the cell.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear the rest of the group, Peter? Alright, thank you.
So, Kate, yeah, and I didn't know if I started reading it. I just, they're talking about a lot different. I mean, the one exhibit I'm, you know, familiar with, just from seeing that, but there's other, I don't, I wasn't clear what they were talking about, but some of it.
I'm happy to, I can put it together.
Yeah.
I can put it together for you tomorrow and send it out to you. It's easy. The, the folder's been right in my office.
Yeah.
It'll take quite a time. You can always come in and look at it. Yes, happy to do it.
And we'll add it to the agenda next time.
Sure.
With all the attachments, with all the attachments, or maybe a link to the affidavits, perhaps? But we don't need a.
Okay, so.
We can link, uh, link it for, I mean, I, I mean, I just said, have you print out all that?
I don't really wanna print them off.
No, no, no.
Okay, so, but I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
If you want me to print them out, I will.
No, I mean, if you, I think if you link, uh, link in the, in the minutes of the meeting or in the agenda. In other words, we're having a discussion. Everything else in here is attached to all our stuff. That's not, and, you know, that's not right. If we wanna be transparent to the public, we're gonna be transparent with everything, because, because how it should work. So we'll have all the transcripts and exhibits included with with the, with the agenda, in a packet. But if you don't want, I mean, we all, I, I mean, I would maybe ask to say, we see a lot of work. We can print off our own, we can print off our own.
Okay, I'll keep it clean, let's figure it's parent.
Yes.
A little bit. You are going to get all the paper that you want. You'll get lots of treats.
I'm not concerned about us seeing it. I just wanna make sure.
Oh, it's, yeah, having it.
You know what I mean? I just, I don't.
All of this.
I know, we got it.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I, I'm, I tend to try and save paper as I can.
That's a lot of paper now.
I will, I will likely review it online.
Yeah, um, does it need to be?
We'll keep it, I, I'll keep it, yeah, don't worry about it.
Do we need to have it all printed to include it in the agenda, or is there a way to just link it if the folks wanna see it?
Well, I can do it a couple ways. So, in which, put on the website.
Okay.
Is your package.
Okay, the whole package?
Yes.
Okay.
So I can do it where the packets are done, and then the transcripts are done separately. You know, it'll be on the website.
Okay.
And then also with the, um, the exhibits. So I can then, for the seven of you, I can print them off if you want, or I can even just look at them on the website or whatever. I, I'll do whatever, and.
Okay. I don't need them for the offer me. Uh, whatever you guys, whatever you guys want.
Yeah, I will probably leave them online.
Yeah, I'll take it. I'll leave it to, I'll give it to the pressure. Yeah, yeah. As long as they're on the agenda, and, you know.
To make it part of the package.
Yeah, that's all, that's all. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll discuss it some next time when we have time. Obviously, this is not brought any kind of resolution till, I'm, I'm guessing, late fall, but if it gets done, Jeff is probably right, late fall, or.
Well, by the, by the, by the time it gets argued, it'll be late fall. By the time it gets decided, it could be later than that.
Yeah, alright, so, I mean, we, uh, there's no, no rush, just, just to get it moving, and then we'll keep it, and we'll discuss it, I'm sure, as the case continues down the road and see what the, uh, the judge has to say about it, but, uh, okay, so, so that's that. Alright, so appointments, we have appointments? I think we have some of the people that have been on our panel here, we have. We've got three, three appointments, three. Okay, let's just, this is a point away. Yeah, what is it? Health district, I guess, the central community health district, that will nominate, we should pay. Okay, uh, any, any nominations for that? None of those nominations, those in favor? Aye. Examination for is this a, an alternate?
Number.
So.
Number five, you have a regular position. And then number six is going also.
We voted for conservation, for.
Okay.
Vote for conservation?
Yes.
So, maybe the nomination. Yeah, sure, got it. I nominate Karen Piglier for Conservation Commission, number five. Number, number five. Okay, second on that? Second, alright. Uh, any other nominations? Now, favor, I, I, opposed. Okay, so move. And, uh, number six, also a combination for the alternate position for the conservation. For the nomination, I nominate yours or both of them. Okay, proposition, thank you. Any other nominations for that? None, we'll close, uh, the nominations, those in favor, Peter? Aye. Any opposed? Alright. On to what, Town Manager's Report, yes. You can't, you can't get away.
So, uh, let me try it, this is really quickly, yes, I've got a whole lot, sort of fall off on the, uh, for the citizens, the items that we discussed.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so there are two approaches. One is the long term that people will look at. But I didn't, I didn't wanna say anything, and I'm not saying anything now either about the short term. Then again, I talked about it, there are a couple of angles we can try, um, to try and, for further, for the ordinance road property.
Yeah.
Before, the, one boat at the same time.
Yes, okay.
You really don't wanna wait until, ordinance is gonna take time, until sentence. But I, I wanna see what we can do next week.
I hope so, yes.
So I, I don't wanna say what we're trying to do. We have a couple of things in the toolbox.
Yes.
People try and, uh,
Good.
pull down.
Yeah.
And see if you can get some traction on those.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. And I, I hope the, uh, while we're waiting on, uh, police investigation, and then also I would imagine there's perhaps some tools in the Police Commission toolbox that might be helpful.
Will, will the ongoing investigation would ever restrict any discussions that we have on the Ordinance Committee, or are we free to just really discuss it as, as it's necessary?
Yeah, because the ordinance, well, you know, I mean, let's face it. We've been, you know, not gonna, we're very fortunate in town. I mean, this is one property, and although it's been multiple times. We don't, we don't wanna be the same, uh, boat, uh, you know, when other properties pop up, so the ordinance will be kind of town-wide. Were they directing it at this property?
I'm not sure if anyone knows this, but were they accepting money for the social gathering?
Oh, they were, okay. I believe that's what some residents have mentioned in either emails to me, you know, but.
Just as a suggestion too, I was told that, uh, you can report the host on Airbnb. There's an option. You can report the host as a neighborhood disturbance. So, I mean, it's a little thing to do, obviously, but value is gonna be, you know, that you can report it and say there are newer disturbances, and again, enough people to do that Airbnb, we'll probably consider dropping.
Yeah.
Bring them on some kind of restriction, right?
I mean, and the thing about that is that, that's, I guess that's great for Airbnb, but there's nothing to stop whoever planned these parties.
Having, having, you having something on the books.
We should have, yeah, well, that's the thing, I mean, Airbnb is one issue, and they could throw them off their site, that's great, but that doesn't mean, you know, he or she or everyone at the house.
He can rent out another one.
To anybody, yeah, to anybody, right?
It means a small step.
No, but it's, it's every, every step, I think, is, well-taught, you know, well said, Mike, is important, you know, we need to look at the, the tools we have. Because, I mean, I, I, I don't know if I've ever seen anything like that, that's quite, uh, it's quite spectacle to behold, which is not true.
You know, the, the other thing we wanna, obviously, we're gonna think through this.
Yeah.
Is not to analyze the people who do it the right way.
Sure.
If someone wants to order it, right? One person does it, and it just, like, you know, uh, a shit entire town. We don't wanna come up with an ordinance that.
No, 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 no.
So we need to be thoughtful, and, and, uh, Jennifer shared some, uh, example, I think we can work with that.
Yes.
And, uh, bring into the ordinance.
I know, the chief shared his experience. I know, the chief shared his experience in Danbury with the same issue and they uh took them a number of years with their ordinance to get it right, to withhold, to court challenges as well, to, you know, that's and of course, it's a city, so they had many more issues than, thank goodness, Brown had, and what we have, but I, I would ask maybe Jeff uh and or Jennifer to look at perhaps the, the Danbury uh ordinance, because the chief is very familiar with it and apparently they had similar, similar issues over the years. As any big city might have, different pieces of property and I, I think they found one that tended to work for, for, for the town, for the city and, and the police department, so. Yeah, whatever examples we could find. And uh, yeah, no, we don't wanna restrict, you know, uh people either, but we do have to. And even if, I guess, we couldn't, I mean, I, I don't know, we'll, we'll see what we come up with, but however the ordinance is written, if people have to come to the council for approval of something, you know, that we know is legitimate, so we.
Yeah, we may not, we'll know about it.
Yes, exactly.
Can take crack at that.
Another bonus.
I mean, yeah, this, I mean, I know that these happened before in the past, but this by the time we know about it, it's too late to really do anything meaningful or they get the police involved.
Yeah.
Did you, did you say that, that Danbury ordinance was, was challenged?
I, I think he said like initially they went through a bunch of.
It didn't pass.
Rights or, yes, he said that the one they ended up with, whatever that was, seemed to pass muster with the courts. From, from his recollection, so.
We were.
And I'm sure Jennifer and you have examples of other towns that have, you know, similar things that, that have passed, you know, through uh the court system. Hopefully, we don't, we don't wanna create that either. We don't need to have a bunch of challenges, but anyway. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh the second item I wanna talk about.
And the ordinance committee, while we're talking about it, what, what's the first day we can do the ordinance committee? As soon as we get started.
We do it tomorrow.
Uh. I can do it tomorrow, actually.
I.
Not Thursday, though. I'm thinking next week, I'm really thinking.
I'm on the ordinance.
Ouch.
Apparently not doing it back out here.
Oh my gosh. What? Uh maybe we look to next week? Who, uh who?
Uh me.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah, yeah.
Charlie.
Charlie.
Okay, I like.
Brandon.
Brandon.
Brandon, so before, but not fine.
Yeah, so he's.
Like two of you, okay.
Sounds good to me.
Nah, nah, next, next week, maybe? What are we thinking next week?
What about next Tuesday? Uh we have charter.
Charter. Next week, yeah.
Yeah.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
That's.
Let's see, what do we have?
It's a Thursday.
Any Thursday?
No, no, but you're not on.
Oh.
Yeah, but you're not on.
You're not.
I know, but they have to be somewhere with me, so it's not.
Uh uh, just keep going. I'm glad she keeps the calendar, it's like, I can't keep it all straight either.
Wednesday.
Yes, okay.
Wednesday looks pretty good for me.
Wednesday, any charter? I don't mind the calendar.
So Wednesday, no.
You have charter.
Charter, we have, we have charter, so we have charter on Monday, the thirteenth.
Okay.
We have public hearing on the fourteenth, and then we have charter on the fifteenth.
Graduation, there's somewhere two.
Graduation, Friday.
Um I mean, what about, what about tomorrow?
Twenty-fourth, I don't know.
Alright.
Yeah, it's Thursday.
Also, we need to get a document that, yes. This is the.
Yeah.
Present, I just.
Yes, if you wanna uh, yeah, we have.
Wanna do it on the twentieth, the Monday before you have.
Yes, I mean, that would be good. It worked for everybody, we think, and that works. Are we saying?
We are, I, I, I know Monday is, Juneteenth is, is the, our, our chambers open? That, you know, open.
It's a weekend, we're not posting on Monday.
Okay, alright.
Oh, no, sure, okay. Very good.
So the twentieth looks good, twentieth works for me.
Works for you, works for me, works for Brandon.
That's fine, you know, it shouldn't take too long, we'll just get it started. Charlie, do you let Peter?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Charter new mission, June twentieth.
Uh.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
What day is it today? Ordinance, June twentieth.
It's getting late.
Going to early, like at six?
Six, six o'clock, six, six o'clock it is.
It's good.
Six? Yes. Okay, alright. What's that? So what's, alright, so we're good, we're good with that, yeah, that'll support to get that rolling, but I know, and I know those stuff will get rolling, okay, so I just wanted to get that, okay, thank you. Alright, so where we at?
Alright.
Yeah.
Couple more updates. Just uh please do announce, we have a new HR.
Oh, yeah, great.
Olada Calabeta, and started uh. Monday. Olada. Calabeta. And um the man and Jeff have the opportunity to meet them, meet her.
Okay.
So guys, nice choice. Started Monday, she joins us, Madison. The uh H, which I'm adding to them. They're going to fight event, she had about almost twelve years in private sector experience, pretty much done everything in HR and also uh very much involved in the professional organization um of HR professionals, she's about. Oh, I as well have a national, another group, she's associated with that, wonderful. Uh yeah, she should be, we had a meeting every week, so. Monday we'll break up the council.
Yeah, good.
I do have, and we're fortunate that Denise will be with us, well, she's gonna be with us. But uh she's moving forward, put up at July one, yeah, so this, this next couple of weeks. Some overlap. Uh we'll do the training and show how things are in the town, I don't know if that will be able to get into the management staff. Uh but at least it's not going there for us, she's gone, so. And, and I, I think it would be also great to have two professionals that they can follow, things off. Uh we are in the process of enjoining um the new labor council.
Alright, yeah.
Three firms and uh Jeff is involved, and thank you Jeff for your efforts and helping us with the RFPs and questions and all that. So finishing wrapping up tomorrow and hopefully next time, maybe we might, we should have um a firm selected, because Chippen and Goodman, Kevin Roy, who's been with the firm for a long time. Yeah, left, and uh also the board of it will remain uh with Chippen and Goodman. And.
And it's all for the town.
They've had just advice for a long time, you have to separately the council, with complex, so I'll be able to explain that as well, that's cool. And the last one I wanna talk about is the Shulantel, registered town clerk. They're having, you wanna go, uh on Thursday at night. Thursday, uh one at nine AM at the senior center and the next one at six PM at the library, they're gonna talk about re-districting. For the public.
Oh, probably.
Ah. On, voting, precinct changes.
Precinct. Okay.
It's nine AM at the seniors, senior center?
And six PM in the library.
Okay.
This is a public.
Public.
Educational.
Informational.
Informational. People who come.
Yeah.
And um this, she was talking about, uh I didn't catch it, I think she might have, uh something that created on the website. So you're talking about, you probably know more about it, that you can put your address and it'll tell you what district. Oh, oh, alright.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes, so if you go to the um registers um website, or webpage, excuse me, then over on the right hand side, it has multiple ways to look up where you vote. One is do it by street, so if you wanted to put in, you know, um Kenton, Rome, it'll pop up as far as what polling places. And then you also can do, there's a link there that you can do to look up your district. And there's also a link where if you absolutely, to bring you to the state website. And if you put in your name and birth date, um it will pull out your polling place. So there's multiple ways to look it up.
Good. Because they gotta start, right, with the primary season, right? They've gotta start with the new or not?
Oh, yeah. That's what I was working on today, we're already married.
Fun time, Jim, I know, it's probably quick, like it's, so we gotta get that word out, so good.
That's great.
I'll say.
That's what's up, very good. Okay, so, no, no, special committee reports, I mean, we already talked about the community center, review and that. Um and then I, there's no other, I don't think we had, right? We finished affordable housing, um. Is there anything else? Uh what's your comment?
Uh yeah, graduation for VHS is on Friday. Really proud of our students. I've, I've met with several of them throughout the courses this past year and time and time again, whether it's them speaking publicly or having events at the high school to showcase their curriculum. It's, it's really impressive what they're accomplishing in our public school system. And I'm excited to celebrate with them and I hope to see a lot of you there. I think it's gonna be a really great event, so.
Great, thank you. Any else? Other comments? I don't know, tonight at ten o'clock? There you go. Okay, just, let's, real quick, just the acceptance of, of these minutes here. Good, uh motion from May twelve, twenty, twenty-two.
Well, motion, so. The minutes from May twelve.
Second on that?
Okay.
Uh second, okay, we've got a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Alright, so move, yes. Uh okay, uh we got here, May seventeen.
I'm hoping we accept the minutes for those, for May seventeen.
Alright, second. Alright, wait, second, second, second.
Second.
Thank you for my, we'll be hanging out, so. Alright, alright, we're good. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Ate thing.
One extension, okay, thanks. And for the, uh, uh, April nineteenth, uh motion to accept the meaningful favor linking.
As a.
As a method, yes, yes. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, alright, so move, and a motion to adjourn. So move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh thank you everyone very much, sorry.
Peter, any, any evidence of wisdom, body?
What, what are they worth, Peter?[1769.81]